Let's call the meeting, a select board meeting of February twenty seventh to order. Please rise for the pleasure.
I would really like to thank America, the Republic of America, and the United States of America.
Please remain seated. For the honor of our veterans for outstanding standing, I quite thank you. Thank you very much. Now you can sit.
I hope not.
It's time for rough time. Okay, thank you all for coming. This is here, that's we can stop the meeting.
Yep.
This is here, we can start. Okay. Um, okay, our first order of. Ah, okay, thank you. We left that so far, I'm sorry. Uh, we are going to continue at the six thirty original appointment and we're going to move to our new business, which is the police conditional offers of employment. Chief Levent.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I currently have four police officer vacancies that I'm working to fill. While we've been progressing through the hiring process and identified four candidates that I believe are qualified to fill these positions, I'm requesting that the board provide conditional offers of employment for the following candidates. Matthew DeRosa is a five-year veteran of the New Bedford Police Department, currently employs a police detective. Prior to becoming a police officer, he was employed as a social worker with the Department of Child and Family Services. He has a bachelor's degree in social work. During his time with the New Bedford Police Department, he has conducted numerous investigations on a wide variety of crimes with some leading to recovery of illegal possession of firearms and narcotics. The next candidate is Ethan Sherman, then a resident of Dartmouth for most of his life, graduated from Dartmouth High School in twenty seventeen, and from UMass Dartmouth in twenty twenty-one with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, while making the dean's list. Currently holds a management position at a local retailer where he has been employed since twenty eighteen. Brandon McNeil is a Dartmouth resident who graduated from Dartmouth High School in twenty eighteen. During his time in high school, he was in a football team, track and field team, where he holds two school records. Brandon studied criminal justice at Pittsburgh State University and recently graduated an eight-week academy with the Bristol County Sheriff's Office, where he is currently employed as a correctional officer in Dartmouth. Final candidate is Alexander Tisdale, also a Dartmouth resident, graduate of Dartmouth High School in twenty sixteen, where he was a three-sport athlete. He went on to attend Framingham State University, where he played football, also attended Bristol Community College and graduated from UMass Dartmouth, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in crime and justice studies. Alex has also managed after-school programs at Westport Elementary School and assisted in creating the first school news program. I'm requesting that the board provide conditional offers of employment for these candidates that will allow me to continue with the screening process and potentially hire them. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
Well, I have a question. Will, um, Mr. DeRosa need to go through the academy again for Dartmouth or if he?
He will not.
He will not. The other three have to go through the academy?
Yes.
So it's some time before they're actually going to be.
Yeah, so we have to reserve seats in the academies and they fill up rather quickly. Um, so what we need to do is we need to finish through the screening process, which includes medical, psychological testing, physical ability tests and so forth, before we're able to actually lock in the seats. So, um, we're looking to progress with that now.
We're looking to progress with that now. So we can lock those seats in for a May academy is what we're, what we're shooting for.
It's in May?
It's, it's in May, yep. That's the next available.
I know it's a long process. Aduis process. I hope you're all running, running, running now to get yourself ready and lifting things. And last I knew, a couple of you were, should be about in seventh grade. So now I'm very old. I promise to drive a speedboat.
Any other comments from the board?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that your families are here. Um, I guess at this point in time, family support is key. Now that you're going through the process and that if, if the process is successful, um, family support is even more key and you're going to rely on them. As, uh, Officer DeRosa or Detective DeRosa already knows, peer support is also key. Uh, you need to lean on each other. Those of you who are going through the academy, being Dartmouth residents, being of the alumni, you should be supporting each other through the academy in any way you can. And then once it comes times to be successful and join the force, then your peers, now you have a much larger family. You have a family of brothers and sisters who wear the badge and you have your regular family. And that's the most important thing. We up here have no better job than to see people rise to the occasion to become public servants, to become public officers, to serve our community in, in the best way that they possibly can. The job isn't perceived to be one of the best. But know that, know that this board and people of this community have your back one hundred percent. And we will continue to have your back one hundred percent. And that's to the existing staff and, uh, the brothers and sisters of the Dartmouth Police Force. Please let them know that we will always have their back. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, gentlemen. Uh, you got a big job to do. It's just starting. Maybe you can aspire to be someone like our chief, your chief, has done and how well he has moved up in, in his ranks. Um, I remember, um, meeting, uh, Brian, um, gee, maybe twelve years ago and, um, and there was something special about him. So at all, at some point, you always see is something special about everybody, especially to the police department. Um, we've been up here, Sean and I, for quite a few years and we've seen, um, we've seen a lot of really good, good men and women apply for the job. And I'm, and I'm not going to stick my neck out, but I'm pretty sure that most of those people are still here. And I want to wish you the most success. I want you to be very careful out there. It's not a good, not a good place right now we're in. Uh, but more important, I think I'd like to have the families get up also before we offer you that unconditional offer, just so we can see the parents and, and family members and please get up. I, I want to salute the parents. Good luck. We'll, we'll watch them.
That's impressive.
So can we offer them now?
We need a motion.
Motion to, uh, offer the, the, uh, Mr. DeRosa, Mr. Sherman, Mr. McNeil and Mr. Tisdale a conditional offer of employment to the Dartmouth Police Department. Second, that motion.
Second. Any comments on the vote, a motion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Unanimous. We wish you the absolute best and thank you for your service.
Thank you all for that too. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good luck. Good luck. Happy to have you.
He's the, he's the chairman of the family and children. That's going to help.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it's, it, what a moment to see the parents stand. That was fantastic. Thank you so much for coming. And if you want to leave, it's okay.
God bless.
If I had to listen to me for another two hours, I'd leave as well, son.
I can count on us.
No vote on that one. Okay, let's wait a second.
Look at these cute little kids. Look at that.
That's, that was really impressive.
Opposite DeRosa.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Uh, at this point, we would like to have Lynn Antunes. Would you please go over the, uh, the podium? I will, uh, Lynn Antunes, I've known for a lifetime. And, uh, where are you Lynn? Oh, there you are. Okay.
There I am.
Okay, there you are.
I always need a little boost.
Uh, it, uh, as we said the other afternoon down at the library, when all your peers, committee members, uh, were honoring you, um, look back on the history of this library and the system where it's come from and the history that Lynn has been here during that time. And as I said then, I said, now I recall when we were trying to build that new library, someone stood up at town meeting and said, why are we building this? Nobody goes to the library anymore. And it's been a packed house in both places and with lots of issues that came up and I, I, but personally, I think this is, uh, retiring is a good thing and you've earned it. And, uh, I congratulate you and I'll let my, my peers to say what they want to say as well. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll say something. So, um, I worked with Lynn on the, um, library building committee. And one of the facts that, uh, she shared with us, which I found startling then and still find startling is that the, the, at the time, the branches, which were Southworth and the small north branch across the street from the police station currently, um, had more circulation than all branches of the New Bedford library system uh, put together, which just blew my mind that, uh, but then every time that I go in to either branch library, there are people for a myriad of, uh, things to do there. And it's not just in the library in person. There's, I've taken, um, classes that the Friends of the Library support. I've listened to lecturers, book clubs, passports, family genealogy. Uh, the list is endless and I don't know if everyone realizes what a wonderful resource our library system in Dartmouth is, that the facilities are. And this is a very well-deserved retirement because, um, Lynn committed to stay as we went through the building process, which was not easy. And I commend her for doing so and wish her long days of good health and happiness and travel. She's the only one around here. Family lives everywhere else but here, so.
I have cousin and an aunt. He's a hundred and one.
Oh, well longevity then, you'll have a long retirement.
In my mother's family.
God bless.
Awesome.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, um, it's been a pleasure all these years. It'll be very difficult to find somebody to, to, to fit your shoes. And, um, your accomplishments are endless. And, um, as Heidi just mentioned, just, I'm sure she just got a few of the, of your accomplishments. We don't have enough time. And we, we wish you, I wish you, and I'm sure the rest of the board, wish you nothing but the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Donald?
This is a closing of a chapter that, uh, has been long in, in writing. It's easy to say that you're going to be hard to replace because it's, it's the easy thing to say. But very few people actually, it's the truth. Knowing what you have done, uh, for the system over these years, been very challenging, very difficult. And I only wish that my sister Suzanne was here to see this and also Dave. Both of them are, I'm sure are having a good laugh right now. And only looking down upon you and only wishing you the best. And
Thank you.
I can only do that. I only wish you the best for you and your family in the future. Thank you Lynn for your service.
Thank you. And I just want to say, um, I did not do this alone. I've had excellent staff and a lot of great support. We have the Friends of the Libraries and the Library Trustees. And everything that's been done has really been a lot of group efforts. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, from the town of Dartmouth, official select board citation. Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Lynn Antunes in recognition of forty-six years of service to the town. Thank you for your selflessness and dedication to the town and libraries, wishing you the best for an enjoyable retirement.
Thank you.
Just because of that, we're going to get shorter podiums now. We're going to get shorter podiums. I'm going to bring that home for my wife. She can use it. Okay, thank you all. Next on the agenda, uh, is to, uh, talk about the Memorial Day Parade update and Mr. McGinn.
Uh, yes, Matt Briere, our Veteran Service Officer, unfortunately had to, uh, leave today. He's got a ill dog that he's dealing with, so I feel bad for him and wish him the best. But I told him I would update the board on the Memorial Day plans. Uh, he'll be back a few more times to talk about the parade, but we'd like to get it going, stick to give plenty of notice. Uh, this year's parade will be, uh, Monday, May twenty-ninth, uh, at eight thirty a.m. Uh, step off will be at nine a.m. from the town landing at the bottom of the, at the, of the bridge and will conclude at the old police station site. Uh, the parade will proceed on Gulf Road and march to Bridge Street, stop on Bridge Street for services honoring the veterans, proceed to Elm Street Cemetery and then continue to the monument at the Dartmouth Police Station for closing ceremonies. Uh, new this year, the Veterans Advisory Board and the Friends of the Elderly will be providing a trolley for those Dartmouth veterans who like, would like to participate in the parade that may have mobility concerns. The trolley is offered to the elderly communities through Dartmouth as well as any veteran who contacts Matt directly. Uh, space is limited, so, uh, we ask that, uh, people RSVP to the event. Uh, they can contact the Veteran Service Office at, uh, five oh eight nine one zero one eight one eight. Uh, or they can contact Chris Pereira, the Chair of the, uh, Dartmouth Veterans Advisory Board at seven seven four nine three zero two six three two.
That's wonderful, them providing that.
Look forward to it as we always do.
A great event.
Yeah, it's a great idea that Matt had.
Good weather.
Uh, a quick note I see via Zoom, uh, Mr. Gracie, Mr. Gracie's joined us. Thank you.
Smokey.
Um, okay. How's the weather going to be on that parade?
Uh, it's going to be nice.
Thank you. Okay.
I think you're supposed to say like.
Um, okay. Move on next. The Director of Budget and Finance Candidate Interview.
Uh, yes, so, uh, as you know, uh, uh, Mr. Greg Barnes, who was here, uh, resigned back in, I think, the late summer to take a job in Rainham. Uh, since then, uh, we started advertising the position. Uh, the select board here appointed Gary Carrero as the interim Director of Budget and Finance, uh, more than a few months ago. Um, Gary's done an excellent job. I really have to say that. He's really stepped up. He's, uh, really brought the staff together. He's implemented some new initiatives. Um, he's streamlined a number of processes, uh, in the finance department, uh, and budget. So it's, it's, it's been excellent. So part of his time here doing that, uh, the board appointed a Finance Director Search Committee that consisted of a member of the Finance Committee, Bob Govan, a member of the Board of Assessors, Curtis Nunes, a member of the Personnel Board, which is the select board, and you, uh, appointed myself, uh, a town meeting representative appointed by the moderator, that was Gloria Bancroft, and the Personnel Administrator, which is Denise Bozeng. So, uh, we met a few times to review applicants. Uh, we had narrowed down the list of applicants, um, and to three, uh, and one withdrew beforehand and another withdrew after the fact. Um, so I just wanted to be upfront with that. That's not to say Gary is by far, both on paper and in person, far more qualified than the applicants we were going to interview that had withdrawn, that had withdrew. Uh, so we met as the Finance Director Search Committee and discussed, uh, that next move forward. As I said, we had advertised a position for nearly six months. Gary's been an excellent interim. I really think, uh, he is the best candidate to put forward uh, in light of the candidates we offered, but also my personal experience. So with that, tonight, uh, the Search Committee had voted to present Gary as the candidate for appointment by the Select Board. And, uh, Denise Bozeng is here to answer any questions as well as the Finance Director Search Committee.
Okay, uh, where do we begin?
Could Gary step up?
Yeah, Gary, would you come up? How about a brief capsule? Keep it under, uh, two hours?
I wouldn't get rid of the stool just yet because I might.
Time's up.
So I'd just like to thank the, um, the board tonight for having me and Mr. Chairman, um, and the Search Committee that took time out of their, uh, out of their data. Go ahead and, um, uh, review candidates. Uh, when I took this position, uh, as the interim back, I think July or August, uh, it was coming off the heels of, of, uh, Greg that had been here for almost twelve years. Um, and so, uh, I, I said to myself, you know, I think we really need to look at the way that the whole department is run, not only the Treasurers Office, but also, uh, accounting, assessors, um, uh, I.T., uh, and, um, and Treasury. And so having a new set of eyes and looking at these, uh, processes, uh, we became a little bit more efficient. We're now having department meetings, uh, and just streamlining, trying to streamline the process. Um, but, uh, you know, I give credit to the staff. That's, that, you know, that's Benny, like Lynn mentioned, uh, the staff is everything. In the last, uh, few, few months, uh, we've implemented, um, a lot of processes, especially in the budget, uh, where we've, you know, we were getting tons and tons of paper and through this process, we've streamlined that. Um, also, you know, there's, there's really no, it, it's not a coincidence that this town is, um, uh, does not have audit findings, is a triple A community and has healthy reserves and stabilization. Uh, that doesn't just happen and it's not because of one person. It's because of all of us. And I think that we give, should give credit to where credit is due on us. It's mainly, uh, to the staff that we have, uh, in, in this department. So my, what my plan is to continue, uh, go through processes, continue to look at, uh, streamlining, uh, certain methodologies that we use. Um, I, as you may know, I serve on the Finance Committee in the town of Westport. I have for ten years. I was, I was Vice Chair and Chair for, uh, Chair, Vice Chair for two, uh, uh, Chair for, uh, four out of those years. So I'm very familiar with building budgets, uh, and, um, uh, the Treasury function. But I want, I want the, the department to know, and when I say department, I mean all of us, that, um, we, we're in a good position to move things even further along than where we've been in the last ten years. And I said, it's a new set of eyes. Um, it's, um, bringing new, new, new initiatives to, to our department. And quite frankly, I, you know, it's, it's nice to wake up every day and love what you do. And, you know, even though this would be, I, I, you know, it'd be a little bit, uh, right now, I'm as a collector, I'm dealing a lot with the public. So I want, I want the public to know that I'm still there in a sense that they could still come to my office. They can still come see me, uh, you know, but I understand that I won't be the direct face of the public, uh, in a sense. But they've got to know that I'm still available for them one hundred percent. Over time, you build these ties with the, with the residents.
Thanks, Gary. So I, I have, I have a question, Gary. Um, what do you, what would you say is your most successful upgrade that you've implemented since you've taken over?
The most successful? Is reviewing policy that we've had in, um, well, reviewing absences of policies that we've had in place. I think that's probably the second. The first is probably the budget process. Is going through the budget process right now and seeing where we, what we've done over the course of ten years and improving on that. Um, and that means engaging the departments, having them look at, uh, taking responsibility for the, for their budget. Because a budget, in my opinion, is really, is probably the most important thing. It's what runs every single department. And if the department head knows that budget inside and out, whereas before it was, in my opinion, um, not really looked at on the, it was looked at at a department level, but it was not, there was no engagement with the, with the department. Last week, I met with every single department except the three large ones. Um, and we had one-on-one conversations on their budgets and they were, they were glad that we did that. And that's something like that hadn't been done in over a decade.
Right.
So it's the one-on-one with the departments, me meeting with them, me having the conversation, open dialogue. And that means better information, not only for the board, the Finance Committee, and everyone that has to make the decisions. Sometimes the decisions are not what we want to hear, but it will always be, from my opinion, the truth.
Mr. Donald? Going forward, if you're appointed, what would be the, probably the most thing you'd want to improve that needs improvement?
I would say that, um, quite, quite honestly, the biggest, uh, hurdle that we have right now is staffing in the Assessor's Office. Uh, we have, we just hired a few, we hired two cashiers. Actually, the first day was today. It was baptism by fire because the tax, but the motor vehicle bills hit the street. So we had lines, also the assessors had lines. But I think, I think, um, the Assessor's Office being the, uh, generator, if you will, of, of seventy-two million dollars of the town's revenue, um, I, I would want to work more closely with them to try to maybe organize a plan to, um, maybe become more efficient in that office, maybe streamline some of the processes that they have. Um, because staff is limited. Um, it's limited in, in every office. And I think that that would be my number one goal, uh, to maybe coming out of this fiscal year, to work with them closer to, to get some of their, um, some, maybe some processes going forward.
Putting on your collector's hat, what is the percentage of bill pay online versus in person?
So I would have to say prior to, I can give you, I can give you some, uh, stats prior to COVID and after COVID. Prior to COVID, my, my office was collecting about two point eight million dollars in cash a year. Right now, we're collecting about one point six million dollars in cash a year. So what happened, COVID, not, COVID helped us in moving a lot of those folks to online, moving them to, um, a lockbox service that we offer. We still do get about fifty-two million dollars of checks, believe it or not, in the box out front. And we process those in-house. So it's not something that I would want to eliminate because it's, it's a real convenience for the, for the residents. Uh, but COVID did swing a lot of that in-house to going online, to, to, you know, processing things, uh, where they're not having to come in the building. But as I always said, I worked in, in Fall River and I worked in Marion. People, people in a generation that want to come out and they want to make a day of it. They want to, they want to come, come to the office. They, you know, they make, they make a day of coming to Town Hall. So we, you know, it could be, it could be anyone. It could be an elderly resident that I, you know, am I going to show them how to go on a computer? They might. Some of them may have computers. Some of them may not have computers. But, uh, we don't, I don't shun them away from coming in to pay, but it has decreased significantly.
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Yep, hang on, of course. I'm going to look back. Now, i- if you make this switch, um, to Director of Finance, we, that then has an opening for a, the town collector. Now that you've, you've certainly been in both roles and done both and at one time, do you see the collector's role? Would you change it in some way or how would you manage? You're going to have to work collectively with that person now that you've done some, what are you thinking about?
So I've had conversations with, uh, Town Administrator about what I foresee maybe the future of the office. Um, back about, if you, if you went back about ten years in the history of this office and, um, it was a lot of, it was a lot, as I just mentioned, a lot of it swung, swung over to, uh, online virtual payments and things like, things of that sort. I, you know, most communities, what they're doing, and I wouldn't suggest this at this moment, but, uh, they, they, they turn the position into either a combined position where they're a revenue officer, uh, they're responsible for, uh, maybe being assistant to my, to, to my office in the Treasury function. So there's multiple ways that towns have come across and changed what the title of Town Collector and used it more efficiently. Um, you know, the processes that we used, as I mentioned, ten years ago, are not the same processes that we use today. And I, and I keep going back to maybe a couple of meetings ago when, uh, Selectman McDonald said that, you know, thirty years ago, we weren't doing half of these things, but now we've, we have to adapt. Um, and we were talking about OPEB and a lot of things that we didn't know about thirty, forty years ago. So I think that I've thought about it. Um, I wouldn't want to just throw somebody in that role, uh, because it is a lot of responsibility. We collect a hundred and three million dollars that comes through that office each and every year. And that grows. So whether or not we're doing online, in-person cash, it still has to be processed. So I, I have had some consideration on what we want to do with it and maybe what we want to call it, but, um, I still have to, to think about it a little bit.
Well, I certainly want to make sure that you have enough time to think about it. I don't want us to like, you know, voila, quickly, you know, uh, post for a town collector. Because I think this is an opportunity for us to. Because I think this is an opportunity for us to do a better job at streamlining the department and making sure that it's working. And I applaud the fact that you've met with everyone in the department so that you're working as a unit and meeting with the department head so they know what's going on and what their department needs versus what other departments need. So I thank you, Gary, for for your efforts and the fact that you've done this for like five months, six months?
I've been in this position for both roles for about six months now. Yeah, and, and, you know, and we have our meetings, we have our department meetings. It's very valuable for someone to know what someone else's, and I think it's more appreciative than anything else to know that, you know, respectful what the assessors are working on or whatever tasks that we have on, on hand. As, as I mentioned to my staff in the collector's office, you may think you're only a cashier, but that's where it starts. It starts at that level. I mean, we're generating revenue for the town.
And interfacing with the public is their most important.
And the first people they see when they come in the building is probably us. So we, we work hard to make sure that we do it right.
My follow-up, it's not a question to you, but a concern which you alluded to is we still don't have an assessor. And for that department to function more efficiently, more effectively, and I don't know how we can.
Yeah, so these are goals that I foresee that we're working on, we're waiting for some information to come back from the department of revenue. But I'd like to sit down with the assessors office and, and potentially put a plan together for that, for them. And whether that means even sharing resources between departments, that's, that's something that maybe we want to have to do in the meantime. Just, we don't want, we don't want a department that's generating all this revenue to fall short. That's
And I know that, yeah, a few meetings ago, we talked about a group that would be coming in or a software package that would be coming in to look at reevaluating our homes. And we certainly need someone in that position. Or as you said, how can the, how can the departments work collaboratively? How can there be a revenue officer or something of the like and?
Yeah, some of that, some of that can potentially go between offices and
Incoming and outgoing.
Yeah, and, and most towns have converted over to that. I'm not saying that we wanted that in Dartmouth, but it's something I think we should explore.
Thank you very much.
Any, Mr. Gracie?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we hire Gary Guerrero as director of budget.
Hang on, Frank. Any comment? Any comment from, first of all, thanks for the search committee to spend the time. Any comments or questions you want to make at this point? Okay, I, I, I personally would just like to say that, that I think that the way you fit in, your personality or such, that you fit in to hit the ground running. And, and I think you've accomplished a lot, and you've also got the confidence of a lot of people in the building. However, as we had the situation with Mr. McGinnis, when he hired, he was the best number two person we ever looked at and interviewed, but he had never been the number one guy. And we had some reservation, but I don't have any reservation whatsoever. I think that he's, he's in charge, he pleases in process, and he pleases in people doing their job and meeting and talking and communicating. And how do you mention all these different functions that we really need to take a look at? And it's a great, great, this is a great job for you, Gary. There's no doubt in my mind that you can do it, but we need to have that, your abilities to go from number two, you want, you've been number four, you're number three, number two, and now you're going to be at the top with a great person to work with. And I, I just, I look forward to innovation and innovation and creativity. And also the ability to, as we've done in many ways, we've, we've gone electronic on a lot of things, we're saving a lot of time, we're saving positions, and, and it's working out quite well. So I, I would look forward to the same sort of thing. And we needed, there's no better department to do it than collecting money. Wasn't long ago that Gloria and I were on the finance committee, I think the budget for the town was about 60 million. And now it's just about double.
How much, 60 million?
Six oh, the whole time, the whole, and now it's double that. So it wasn't that long ago. So we're, it's a big job in a big town, and we've got a lot of employees. So I, my personal point of view, I think I see great success for you and just that, that, that maneuver, that switch over from being the number two guy doing a great job to the number one guy looking all over the place in a way that's a different perspective is what I, I see to be that you're, you're challenged to make sure that, I think you'll need.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
One, just to follow, you're a very talented young man, and we have you back, honestly. One, one thing about Dave's comment about our current town administrator. Sean promised to do a lot of things, and everything he promised to do, he succeeded, but never failed. And so we look forward to you having that same, that same functioning ability to, to have your sights set high and go for it.
We have, we have you back. Any other, any other questions or comments, anybody from the, from the crowd, Mr. McDonald?
No, I think Mr. Gracie wants to make a motion.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make the motion that we hire Gary Guerrero as director of budget and finance.
So pending contract negotiation.
Always.
Always, okay. That's a complete motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second.
No, Stanley was second.
Let's go from the corner, duke it up.
No, Stanley, Stanley was here when the budget was three bucks, so. And I'm proud of it.
Okay, any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Once again, very, very proud of the people who worked with us. Thank you, Curtis, Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
Help you gave us. We ended up with the right guy. Get to work.
Go get us some money.
Count that money.
Okay, next on the list is the Eversource Gas Projects Review. Who was here for Eversource?
Anthony Velu.
Oh, boy, it's, I'm Anthony.
You've seen this guy before.
He's the guy that, the other guy that directs traffic out on the street? No, that's not you.
I also have to be at a planning board meeting, so I'm trying to clone myself. As soon as I get that done at, well, you guys know. Yeah, so me and the people on community relations at Eversource, and we decided, a brief, just trying to do better communication on our, we have a 2023 gas system enhancement program in Dartmouth. We're basically replacing old cast iron bare steel. Sorry about that. So basically replacing old cast iron bare steel with plastic. And we have some, we have a scope of work that we met with the Mr. McGinnis Town Administrator, as well as a DPW a few weeks ago on it. Our plan is to start April 3rd, finish no later than December 1st, depending on the weather. And we know we have some issues around Bliss Corner neighborhood, but we're working with our LSP with the town to identify some of the contamination there and how to address it and ways around that work. I was hoping to have my engineer with me today, but he unfortunately couldn't make it. So it's just a brief, I don't really have a presentation, I think, Mr. McGinnis?
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you guys have any specific questions, I'm more than happy to take down the questions, get those specific answers to you as soon as possible.
My question is, how will the folks in this, these areas be notified of the project?
That's a great question. We can, we can make sure that they receive notification, a letter in the mail that this is going on. I'll, I'll take that back to gas and our gas construction team and coordinate some sort of outreach.
Anthony, would it be safe to say that sometimes these projects are not that well orchestrated and a few people could be surprised from time to time with what's going on?
Sometimes.
Okay, so that's not going to happen now because this is the schedule?
Correct.
And we're going to notify the residents in each area?
Correct.
Do you need the assistance from the town to do that?
If I need assistance, I'll let you know. I'll work with DPW and
The goal is to not have our residents surprised and stick to the schedule. And if there is an adjustment to schedule, you'll let us know, we'll just move on. So people will know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Great. Because recently, there was a project that we didn't know about, and we, and it, it, that won't happen again, so.
Yeah, on Allen Street, it won't happen again.
Allen Street, that was the one, yeah, thank you.
So you have about 20 projects. And you see, finish dates are all in 2023?
Uh, yes.
Will you accomplish that?
We're looking to finish everything by the beginning of December. We can't really work over the winter without town approval. So if it has to go longer, we have to have the DPW approve it.
Are they ripping up your driveway?
No, no, no. I mean, if we've had such great weather, should be no reason for you not to be working.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, okay.
Just cursed us.
You've cursed us now, yes.
No, it didn't.
Just as, Mr. McDonald? Just as a clarif, just a notification to the public. The areas that they're looking to work in is the Sable Avenue area, Allen Street, Homer, Anne Avenue, Sable Avenue, McCabe Craftsman, Grant Shop Streets, Perry Street, Russell's Mills, Westwood, Lenora Gibson Terrace, Truman, Patton, Slocombe, Longwood, Nimitz, Doolittle, Marshall, that area, Soloma, Hobby, and Canfield, Flagship Drive, Anne Avenue and Sable Avenue again, Morton Avenue, Spring Street, Hilltop, Richard Allen, and the one that I'm going to be very curious to see is State Road.
Me too.
So if, let me ask this question. Once the work on State Road is done, is it up to Eversource to pave the road to state stat, or is it? I'll be honest with you, I know it's, and I know it's not Eversource's fault, and this is a straight shot at DOT, but Route 6 is a complete disaster as far as traveling it. They haven't taken care of it over a number of years, and I, whatever the process is, I'm not sure. And just having work done on State Road to add to it, I'm now looking forward to the, you know.
No, that's understandable. But so State Road would be the responsibility of paving of the state. And that, that one's the last because we need a state permit to actually do that. And I think we were in the process, process of getting one. I'm not even sure if that's complete yet. So this project is still sort of TBD.
And it's from Slocombe Road to Champion Terrace, so it's only that part of State Road.
Right.
West, westbound.
So I, these are plans, you'll do the best you can, and you'll also do the very best you can to let us know how it's going.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we are prepared to notify, to make changes, but, and these are, you know, you'd like to see it happen, but it's a lot of work, and we can be notified, that's what we're looking for.
And I'm more than happy to come back in the middle, in the middle of the summer, if you want an update on the progress, and I'll bring gas construction with me as well as engineering and give you guys an update, no problem about it.
Would you notify our office when you think it's a good time to report it?
Absolutely.
I think it's really important to make sure that the residents know that this is happening.
Absolutely.
Great.
I have a, I have a comment. I know it's, we're not in Rhode Island, but in Rhode Island, they have, they have a law now and on the books that any of the, any of the utility companies, including their state, when they, when they do construction work, their responsibility, their responsibility is to repave and repave from curb to curb. And if that's not done, they're fined very heavily. I would like to see something like that in, in Massachusetts, especially in Dartmouth. Because the utilities just destroy the, they do the worst job, and we're stuck with another hole. Anyway, just for your information.
Well, now he looks forward to coming to see us.
Yeah, okay.
That's, I get that a lot.
I think we made that point here, so.
Yeah.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes?
Is it possible to get this presentation up on our Engage Dartmouth and also on our new portal?
Yes.
Especially the residents. See, you know, the areas affected.
And the start and finish date, so people know this might be happening at their house and between April and July, and somebody else, it's between July and August, and others between August and October.
The stress point is, it is subject to change, but we just want to know what the changes are as it goes along.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
100%.
Enough said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thanks for kind of showing up.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Serp Ed Open Space Plan Presentation.
Yes, I'll give a little preview. So as you know, this, the town is in the process as required by charter to open, to update the open space and recreation plan. We received a grant from the state to hire a consultant, which is Serp Ed, to perform the, help to perform the study for us to update the plan. Helen Zinkovich is the manager of environmental programs at Serp Ed, and she's been working with the town closely along with Christine O'Grady, our planning director and our assistant town administrator, as well as the Open Space and Recreation Committee inherent in town. So they've gone through the process, they've had a number of workshops, Helen's going to explain, and Helen's going to walk through the process and also give you a presentation on the outcome of the updated plan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Helen Zinkavage from Serp Ed. As Sean said, as the projector reboots here, I'll just dive in and we'll have a visual imminently, I would say. So yeah, Dartmouth has been going through an update to its open space and recreation plan. I'll start with kind of what is an open space and recreation plan? It's really a document that describes a community's open space and recreation resources, but it's also a blueprint for action for open space and recreation decision makers in a community. It kind of asks the questions, okay, where are we today with our open space and recreation plan network? And where do we want to go in the future? And that involves a lot of entities, right? There's town residents who are invested in this, there's conservation commission, parks, planning board, historical commission, ag commission, CPC, local citizens. There's just so many people who aren't invested in open space and recreation. And this plan kind of brings all those interests together to talk about what do we really want to try to get done over the next seven years. So tonight, I'm here. This is from the state's Open Space and Recreation Plan Workbook. And so they say here, the only approval required for your plan is from the Division of Conservation Services. But of course, we would like approval from the community at large who helped to create this plan. They gave their buy-in, their thoughts, their opinions. We really appreciate all the time that people took to attend meetings as well as to fill out the online survey. But we do need some kind of official documentation from the town. So what we are here seeking tonight is the approval to generate a letter of review from the chief municipal officer in the community. In this case, something on behalf of the chair of the select board. So that, that just says that they support the outcomes of the plan, they support what it says and the direction that the town's going. An open space and recreation plan has 11 required sections. I alluded to that state open space and recreation plan handbook earlier, and it's very kind of prescriptive what each of these sections should include. Tonight, we're really here to talk about the community vision, to kind of give you what the backing was for the recommendations that were developed, and then to talk about the recommendations themselves. So, and I'll also just say, where is the plan in process? So a final draft is available at this website, serp.org/dartmouth-osrp. That will bring you to this document. It's a full draft of the plan. So you can check that out at your leisure. It's quite, it's quite lengthy. You'll see it's over 200 pages. But that is because, as I said, the state has very prescriptive needs from these plans. And, you know, meeting all those requirements takes, takes some pages. We have to make a couple of final tweaks to section five, the, the Open Space and Recreation Plan land inventory, just to kind of find, finalize a couple of parcels that we needed to just do some last minute research on, but that's coming along and will be done imminently. And then the town is working on providing some required ADA information and documentation. So the first big theme I wanted to hit tonight is what were the key public engagement findings? So this comes from community workshops as well as the Open Space and Recreation Plan digital survey that was available for a couple of months earlier this year. Like I said, public survey, there was three public workshops, and then a final presentation of planned action items to the public as well. So what are some of the key findings? We asked people, what do you typically do when you recreate in town? A lot of people enjoy walking and hiking on trails, wildlife viewing and bird watching, swimming, biking, agro tourism, cultural tourism and activities on the water, as well as use of playgrounds and picnicking areas. So these are the kinds of activities that Dartmouth residents reported actively engaging in in Dartmouth. We asked, okay, what do you, what do we need more of in town? And a few different facilities and recreation types were forthcoming from that question. People were interested in more access to ice skating facilities, pickleball courts is a major topic across many jurisdictions now, multi-use fields, tennis courts, lacrosse fields, field hockey fields, basketball courts, more biking, that was kind of a very emphasized point in the survey responses. Additional walking trails would be great. Additional opportunities for softball, and again, more additional opportunities for field hockey. We asked, what, okay, the town has facilities now, we may not need new ones, what should the town focusing What should the town focusing on improving? So respondents thought that the town could improve baseball fields, especially the high school baseball facility, Quinn Field and the middle school practice football field. And in general, respondents were generally satisfied with soccer and youth football facilities. Yes, like I said before, one of the key pieces of the survey that came back was that Dartmouth needs new paved dedicated bike lanes. And some other fill-in answers that folks responded with that, you know, Dartmouth would also benefit from additional areas for outdoor education, picnic areas, areas for nature study, mountain biking, places to run and jog, an outdoor fitness trail and potentially a skate park. Residents were generally satisfied with existing equestrian trails, playgrounds and golf facilities. So for water-based recreation, which of course is a major, major opportunity here in town, we asked folks about particular water-based recreation access points. And they came up with some particular barriers to usage at each of them. So for example, the barrier that was most frequently cited for recreating at Round Hill Beach was parking. At Diaz Landing and at Ponte Gansett Beach, it was water quality. The condition of the beach could be a barrier at Demeris Lloyd State Park. And then there was kind of just a lack of awareness of what's available in terms of recreation on the Pascomans River. For water-based recreation, respondents voiced the opinion that Dartmouth could use more swimming pools, canoeing and kayaking opportunities, places to fish and shellfish, and potentially more moorings and/or small boat marina. In terms of improvement, respondents thought that existing public beaches and motorized boat ramps could use that improvement energy. Respondents were generally satisfied with sailing facilities. And then in a couple of questions, I think hunting is technically allowed at some of the wildlife management areas. And there was kind of significant negative feedback about hunting in town. Other activities that were written in for the town to include would be a splash pad, providing boat storage opportunities, so maybe canoe and kayak racks or something similar. And then organizing swimming lessons at town beaches. In terms of different age groups and their satisfaction with recreational offerings, we found that addressing the needs of teenagers is a big item here. For this age court, it was the only group where more respondents reported a low satisfaction with age-appropriate recreational offerings than those who reported at least a moderate level of satisfaction. So there's definitely a gap there. We found that Dartmouth roads and sidewalks are being actively used by cyclists and pedestrians. And so those, the emphasis on complete streets and making those facilities safe for all types of circulation and transportation is really important. And we asked some specific questions. We asked respondents, you know, what street do you live on and do you think your street needs more sidewalks? And there was kind of mixed results there. But for those where there was at least a margin of two respondents that wanted more sidewalks, we have the listing here. In terms of open space and conservation land, a full 88% of respondents supported additional land conservation in Dartmouth. So this is a great kind of big picture takeaway to have from this process. There is still a lot of community support for land conservation. And in terms of what it kind of land-related issues are you most worried about? It really came out that residents are concerned about the protection of drinking water, so preserving land over aquifers or other kinds of land that can help with that, reducing pollution into water bodies. And then the threat of the loss of agricultural land. We asked specifically, okay, so we want, we want more conservation land in general. Where exactly, you know, can we get a little bit more specific about where you'd like those opportunities to be? And we had a couple of specific places that were referenced several times. So areas around Paine Narum Harbor, areas in North Dartmouth, Old Fall River Road, especially its farmlands, areas around Pascomans Woods, Hawthorne Country Club came up a few times, specifically George Farm, also farmland along Gulf Road and then additional land surrounding Cedar Dell Pond. Dartmouth, the residents felt that Dartmouth should focus on preserving lands that provide or protect, again, water supply protection, forests and woodlands, wildlife habitat, farmlands, access to the waterfront and water-based recreation, opportunities for passive recreation, which is a little bit of a jargony term, but it's basically recreation that's not active running around in, on a field, things like walking, picnicking, biking, things that are a little bit more low-impact or individualized. And then opportunities to mitigate climate change impacts through land preservation. Also protecting wetlands is part of that. And then you know, in some cases, a particular tract of land might provide a few of these benefits, just inherent in one parcel. And so that's also something to consider when you're prioritizing land for preservation. So that kind of sums up the feedback that we got from the public. We have on that website that I showed before and that I'll show at the end, kind of a very full public engagement report that goes through kind of question by question, shows all the percentages, kind of does like a big picture takeaway and a synthesis of every answer. But those bullets are the main points that kind of come out of that larger description. So goals, objectives and action items. So how did we take that information and kind of turn it into how the town should proceed in terms of preserving more land or opening more recreation facilities? We have five goals. The way this is structured, the plan is structured is that there are goals, objectives and within objectives, action items. So it's kind of like, where do we want to get to? What are some of the subcategories of action we can take? And then what are the specific actions that we're going to take? And I'll just advance a little bit here to show how this ends up looking. It's in a table. And so when you get down to the specific realm of actions, we have the action described. We summarize potential responsible parties or partners within town and also outside of town, for example, from nonprofits or other entities that are kind of working toward this general type of action. We talk about potential funding sources. Sometimes it's staff time, sometimes there's a particular grant source that can help with, with an action. And then the implementation year, is this something that we're going to try to do on an ongoing basis, something that needs kind of constant update and attention? Or is this something that we have a kind of a specific timeframe in mind where we're going to take a discrete action? So kind of to get into the specific goals, goal one is all about kind of information and policy. So provide decision makers, including town residents and voters, with effective policies and tools to protect and enhance those qualities that support open space and recreational activities within the town. We have four objectives under that goal. The first is to promote conservation, open space, cultural, historic and recreation planning priorities in town decisions, actions and plans where and when appropriate and practical. Continue to make the open space and recreation planning process open and accessible to the public and ensure that regular updates are provided on the implementation of the plan. Three, increase community awareness of and appreciation for the town's cultural, historic and natural resource assets. And then four, take the actions needed and pursue the means necessary, whether those are administrative, fiscal, regulatory partnerships, et cetera, in order to accomplish the goals of this plan. So then within goal one, it would be, it will be a lot if I, if I read every single action item here tonight. There, there are over, over a hundred of them. But I, you know, would like to highlight a few from within each goal. And we can of course discuss them in more particular detail if you would like, but for example, with goal one, we want to make sure the OSRP is integrated into other key town plans. And it can be plans like, for example, a master plan, but it could also be kind of really practical documents like the capital plan and the budget. You know, we want to keep the public informed about OSRP implementation progress through the town website and that kind of Engage Dartmouth framework that is being built up. We want to keep current with land, park, MDR, mass trails, complete streets and municipal vulnerability preparedness grants. So all, those are kind of some of the main grants that enable open space and recreation progress. And then we want to let people know what's, what's here, what's already available to, to take advantage of and to enjoy in town. And so some of those actions might be to improve wayfinding signage at recreation and open space areas or to develop maps and information for all open space and recreation tracks held by the town to encourage appropriate public use.
Helen, quick question. You're going to have action a lot, as you said, over a hundred. But within each one, is it within your purview to highlight the, not only the most important, but the ones that have the lowest hanging fruit that are doable? Is that something you could do for us or is that not a part of the program?
Yeah, no, 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 definitely. Yep.
Not, not tonight.
Oh, sure, okay.
I want to go through all hundred, no. I'm just, as a reason why I ask now is because I'm, as you go through these things, I'd like to think that we kind of did that with the harbor plan. And, and we, it really identified the stuff that was really doable, important and kind of low-hanging fruit. And if you could keep that in mind in your final presentation, I think that would be very helpful to us. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And one place where that might be already reflected, though we could bring it out a little bit more, probably is in this implementation year kind of column. Because some of these things are ongoing. And then if it was, if it was something very urgent, one of the things we asked workshop participants is there's been a lot of kind of planning around this space, right? So we kind of had this matrix of, okay, what's really immediately actionable, what could take more time? What's high priority? And so we kind of had that within their responses.
That would be really helpful for us.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, goals and objectives. Number two. So this one focuses on the unique elements of Dartmouth, conserve and protect the unique coastal, agricultural, rural and scenic qualities that give Dartmouth its characteristic landscape. And so each of the objectives kind of fits one of those, those categories. Number one, promote the practice of farming and the retention of agricultural land and business as an important local and regional economic engine. Two, protect, preserve and conserve Dartmouth's coasts and coastal heritage. Three, protect, preserve and conserve Dartmouth's scenic coastal, open space, field and forest land vistas. And four, protect, preserve and conserve the town's historical and cultural assets. So some of the, a couple of action items that we can highlight here is to update the town's farm brochure listings at least every other year, develop a list of agricultural preservation restriction targets and reevaluate that list annually, acquire parcels for preservation within the Paine Narum Harbor watershed that increase public access and or coastal resilience, develop a recreational waters access plan for coastal and inland waters. More on the kind of historical end of things. You know, create more opportunities to connect Dartmouth residents with the town's historical character such as programming to run on DCTV. Evaluate historical and cultural items that are at risk of flooding today and under future climate conditions. And then continue to work with the Massachusetts Historical Commission on preparing national historic register nominations. Goal three, preserve, protect and maintain the quality of Dartmouth's natural resources. And this one has a couple of, maybe the most objectives of any, because there's lots of different types of natural resources here. But number one, protect the quality and quantity of the town's water supply, surface water and groundwater resources. Provide extra protection to the town's most fragile and vulnerable natural resources. Plan for and undertake the necessary physical, structural improvements to infrastructure and facilities that impact the quality of the town's natural resources. Prioritize the conservation of lands that have inherent climate resilience value. And five, promote the preservation, retention and quality of regionally significant natural resources. So some of the goals here to highlight, we really kind of focused in on the town's coastal marsh areas and to create a plan to support salt marsh migration inland. A sea level rise turns existing marshes into tidal flats because these are such an important resource for protecting the town from flooding and tidal surge. We don't want them, them to all be inundated and not be able to fulfill that purpose. We have, you know, enforce the town's aquifer protection overlay zoning district and update that as is needed. You know, work with the state, although recent Title V issues may complicate this, but that aside, work with the state to accomplish total maximum daily loads for water bodies that are known to be impaired. So we can quantify the issue and work to resolve it. And then promote regenerative farming practices that retain healthy soils. And I think another great one to highlight, maybe two, I'll highlight two more. Develop forest management plans. The town's MVP plan talked a lot about blowdowns and trees being somewhat of a hazard. So develop those forest management plans to mitigate pest and fire risk. And two places that were discussed as good places to start would be town forest and the interchurch land around Nokuchoke. And then one more here, take the next step to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System. Goal four, provide a range of active and passive recreational facilities and programs that address the needs of all Dartmouth residents. So the objectives here are to increase and improve access for water-based recreation, including activities based in and around Dartmouth's coastal and inland waters. Increase and improve access to open space holdings for active use and passive recreation and enjoyment. Provide recreational programming that promotes opportunity for lifelong involvement and activity for people of all ages and abilities. And develop new facilities and upgrade or repurpose existing facilities in order to enhance recreational use and opportunity. So some of the, a couple of just to showcase what's here, we have things like identify and create more places available for canoe and kayak put in, especially along the Pascomans and Little Rivers. We have a couple that will, that call for greater participation and kind of coordination between UMass and the town, including working with them to open up the pool for greater use by town residents and then also exploring a partnership to identify a location for an ice rink. To address perhaps some needs for the teen, for kind of teens in that demographic, examine the feasibility of establishing a skate or bike park. We have add items like complete ADA improvements as needed in the town's park and recreation areas. And a couple that discuss needing new, implementing new trails as well. I think this was kind of something that came up frequently. Recommendation related to constructing or creating more places available for fishing and shellfishing, especially a solution that resolves user conflicts along the causeway. So goal five, our last goal here, manage and channel growth in a manner that retains the character of the town and its natural, cultural and historical assets. While also promoting recreation. So number one, consider the crossover needs of open space and recreation planning goals and objectives and the preservation of unique insensitive environmental features and resources when drafting, recommending and passing zoning code changes. And then promote a healthy and livable community that encourages multimodal, non-vehicular and vehicular, but you know, the multimodal, the bikes and pets need attention, including continuous improvements to the town's bikeway system. So some of the main goals here we can talk about are to work with local and regional partners to develop and grow regional multimodal trails, which we know is kind of underway with the recent South Coast Bike Way feasibility study. So start to implement some of the outcomes of that study. Map existing bicycle parking structures and identify needs for additional structures. Implement the town's complete streets plan, which is a plan that aims toward getting more preserving, you know, really great automobile-oriented paths, but also including bicycles and pedestrians in the, in the mix of transportation on the ground. And perhaps even develop a town bike trail plan to explore opportunities for both on and off-road routes in a really comprehensive, holistic way. On that first kind of objective side, ensure that low-impact development options are enshrined in the town's zoning bylaw. And then lastly, a very kind of specific recommendation about constructing a sidewalk along Smith Nick Road, extending the existing sidewalks at the causeway to the entrance to Bayview. So with that kind of just overview and highlighting there of some key recommendations, we did have the, the last public meeting happened mid-January and we then had a public comment period that was open through the 15th of this month. So that period is now closed. Like I said, we're just doing the last bits of tidying up that we need to do before we're ready to submit this plate, this plan to the state. And we hope that tonight we'll get your endorsement as well and we'll have that one more key piece toward that submission process. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah. Huge.
Comments?
Overwhelming. I'm curious, I'm a little disappointed at the numbers. Not, not what you presented, but the people that actually answered. I thought we'd get an awful lot more people. And those numbers were in my opinion, short.
For the survey?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got we got about seven hundred responses, but I think there was really four twenty that was a core that were really like answered every question.
Yeah, it's unfortunate and the responses were great, but it's and they obviously wanted. Wanted to be part of this and 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 make sure that their comments were well heard. And I guess we have a lot of people that like to get out. And ride bikes and do this and do that and they were and they're in good shape. Good. Young should stay that way and they should exercise and we should offer programs. For from the town for them year round.
Absolutely.
And not just even though the summer is so wonderful year round.
Anybody else for comment?
Well, this is, I mean. During the presentation, you're thinking of what? What can and cannot be? Done. I think the easiest thing and the first thing that the town could really do on its own without. With minimal amount of resources is bike lanes. You know, is creating bike lanes in some of the some of the areas in town where. You know, we want to bring bring the biking to and where, you know, it's safer. You know, where it's safer and and I think. The 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 only things, the only concern that I have with bike lanes is that. Sometimes it becomes a passing lane for idiot drivers who are just having, you know, nothing. They're impatient, exactly. And I just don't want to see, you know, that type, you know, that type of happening. But one of the things, one of the benefits of of. Of a bike lane. Especially if it's on both sides of the road. It reduces the width of the road. And it kind of has a. Psychological effect on drivers creating. A slower pass through the road. And as it seems as little ridiculous as it is, but it's been studied. That the thinner the road, the slower the traffic. While I don't want to see, you know, a six foot. What with road on Salkum Road, you know, I I I just think in some areas like Reed Road, like. O Westport Road, Beeden Road, Fisher Road. You know, let's go for a path, Rocker Dundee Road. You know. That part of town is is just absolutely crying for for a bike path. And getting it down to Round Hill and getting it, you know, doing a circular through Potomsker and. And whatnot, I think it just absolutely cries for one. And it's something that can, you know. I'll be. Couple thousand dollars worth of green paint for a lane and and white and you have yourself a bike lane. You know?
I. As I traveled. Last month, as I travel the roads of Delhi, India. And I saw the bikes and the motor scooters and stuff and I kept saying to myself that. There's got to be a way that we can do this simply adopt and to get bikes on the road that are more safe and to organize ourselves. We do have a bike waste committee who can we can work with, and I think that's one of our priorities. My other comment was regarding clean water and resources and we are in the midst of. A raging. A raging issue regarding clean water and I would think like to think that. We can do these things and study that what's needed along with. Our challenges of what Title Five is going to bring us, whatever that might be. And it's that makes it all that much more important. We coordinate our efforts on the things you you pointed out. But I think bikes are pretty clear as one of the issues, but you you say you say you think you'll be able to highlight those. The the priority things on your on your final report.
Definitely.
Mrs. Brooks?
I would love a copy of what the slides that you showed tonight. I read through the fifty five pages that were sent to us. And I will say there were some of it that I I cried and reread thinking. What is this saying? What does this mean? And I too was disheartened with the. Few. Survey because at first I was thrilled with the seven hundred plus, but then when you look at it, as you said, it was then four hundred. However, having done surveys before, ten percent of the, you know. And so I guess when we got four hundred, that's I guess about ten percent of.
We'll take it.
Us, which is. Having attended one of the meetings, though, I also felt. Disheartened attending the meeting because there were so few people. That weren't connected to something, you know, either a a committee in town or a group. There were so few, I want to say, regular residents. That attended and that's that's on us as residents, you know, being apathetic to showing up. And I can't say they were held during, you know, the winter, but we haven't had a bad winter. So it wasn't a snow and ice thing that people didn't show up.
The only thing I'd add to that is that I think that if we really glean the most prominent. I think whether there were four hundred or four thousand, I think we can find those things that are and make sure we get the get those things done and formulate. Because we know that bikes are an issue and we know that obviously the clean water and there are other things in there that are pretty obvious. So whether we'll just have to, you know, back on the fact that. Glean it that way.
But I think this presentation will help us to glean it.
Hundred percent.
What I read, I I didn't know where we were going.
Yep.
So.
Anybody else? What's it's going to work now? You're going to submit this to us? The final, which would be timetable on that?
Helen's going to finalize it. They still need to present to the planning board, I think, in what March thirteenth? And then the planning board needs to write a letter of support and then the select board dice as well.
And with that, I don't mean to be repetitive, but we will be able to get that prioritized list that you think are the ones that are most important.
Yeah, yeah, and hope and they will. I mean, just want to be clear, they won't be the ones that I, you know, I think are most important, but the ones that.
You do the best.
You and, you know, residents have elevated. Yeah.
As I said before, the experience, I asked the same question. It was a master of the harbor plan and it worked out quite well. They really highlighted. It's pretty obvious.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'd be happy to do that. Thank you guys so much for having me tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Great. All set here? Next on the list.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, before we go to the next item. I've been told that the audio of the meeting is being played at home is really bad. I just sent a text over to Peter Chase. In the next room. Saying that he he is aware of the issue and that he'll have the audio fixed for replay. So if you're if you missed anything, please look for the replay. It'll have a more cleaner audio.
Did it involve any specific people who were?
Was it this presentation maybe?
Started from the from the beginning.
So I thought it was maybe softer when you speaking?
No. Yeah.
All right.
And you sounded like a little lot of fun when it talked, so. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. You'd have to ask Peter. But it will be, I know Peter will have it cleaned up for the replay.
Thank you. Okay, next, thank you for your patience. Now, next up is the Select Board Appointee to the Library Director Search Committee.
Yes, I can. These next two items kind of go hand in hand. So the the Library Board of Trustees has met. To discuss replacing Lynn Antunes, who's retired. Charter says that they're required to form a library director search committee. The trustees met and decided on the composition of the committee. That was two library trustees. That myself, the town administrator, our H R director Denise Bozeng, a member of the select board. That's the other item that needs to be appointed tonight. A library staff representative and a friend, a representative from the Friends of the Dartmouth Library. So. Tonight, the board would need to appoint. A member of the select board to be on the committee and then they would have to vote to approve the committee.
I understand we've done a nationwide search to find the volunteer.
I think I have.
We have, we have the perfect volunteer from our board for this. Yes. I'm going to nominate Heidi Silver Brooks.
Yes, and I'll second it.
I accept the nomination. I was sitting on my hands.
Are you against it, Mrs. Brooks? Are you okay?
No, I I'm happy to do so. I want to make sure we get someone.
Fortunately, you are the most qualified as well.
Thank you.
Not necessarily, but.
Wow.
Down boy.
Well.
Wow.
Any comments on the on the we have a second, first and a second? Yes, we do. Any comments before we vote? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We voted quick before she changed her mind. That worked out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Take a motion that we engage the library's director search committee. As a whole.
Second to that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both are here, none. And I. Many you're here from the library. We 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 you got some work ahead of you, but it's a good thing to do and we're going strong and thank you for all your efforts to try to help us out and we'll find a. We'll find the right replacement. And we're also dealing as a as quick aside about the 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 members of trustees. We're still working on that one too.
Yes, we'll have something for our next meeting.
Great. Because we're the we're going to try to make consider an adjustment on the amount of trustees. So you're going to come back to us for that. Well, you got a lot, got a lot going on over there. Okay. That's it lobby. Thank you for waiting for us. I almost. It was too late when you started talking. I was going to try to flip it over, but. But it's actually started. I missed the opportunities. Oh, yeah.
Well, it's an awful lot of information. Yes, yeah, it was.
He would have missed it.
No, I, no.
Thank you very much for the all the work you're doing to get that job done. Okay, next. Want to say something, Stanley? Do you have something you wanted to say? I'm sorry, go right ahead. Your name?
Stan Belusiac, I'm chair of the library trustees. Looking forward to working with you again, Heidi. And hopefully this will be a little quicker than our.
Than building the library. It's really a key position to have to make sure we have a continue to have a robust.
Right.
Library services.
All the other six spots. Have already been filled. So we're looking to meet as soon as possible. And Denise will be setting up a Zoom meeting. So if you could contact her. And just let her know what won't work for you.
Thank you so much, Stanley.
This week or next week.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you.
Good job for somebody to have out there.
Thank you for the recognition for Lynn. She she really.
Deserves it.
Well deserved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you all. Okay. Website redesign launch, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so people that visit our website may have noticed late last week that there was a new look and feel to the website. So. This has been a process we've been going through for about.
Even we haven't.
A good six months. We had received some grant money to perform this and Chad DeChamps, our systems analyst, was spearheading the effort along with. Melanie. Perry in my office and a number of other staff. We had a team together to evaluate options, setup, look and feel. It's 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 somewhat template oriented. You'll notice if you look at other sites in other communities, it's it's pretty similar, but. It has more features, it's easier navigation, it's easy, also easier for the staff to manage and update. So. We look forward to using it with the staff, but we want to hear from the public. So right on the front page, there's a contact us if they we'd love to hear what they think about the site. So.
Any comments?
I can tell you this right away. That I like the look. I like the navigation ability of it. And there's already been some people who have signed in. Made their own accounts and they've been notified. Of number one, the parking ban that's affected right now because of the potential storm and number two. The no school for tomorrow. So they've been notified and they've already said, hey, I guess this new portal works. So it does work. That being said, we do know there are bugs. All of us have have tried to get to our our private access. Yeah, but we've got through it, some more difficult than others. But we got there and we're getting everything.
I was able to put it on my phone, but I couldn't put it in the computer.
Right.
So and they're both the same.
No, but sometimes but sometimes it happens. I mean, there's there's no doubt about it. And the only thing is, is I know. In in going through our private access, only there's only a certain number of of things that I know eventually I don't. Are they going to load up? What was there previously or just kind of like saying?
The private access.
We're going to go forward. Okay.
All the other. Not but a lot of the information, all the agendas and minutes that were on the old site will be on the new site. Okay, so like that.
Well, they had a select board.
They've converted a number of pages and information and documents. So there's a lot.
Still get that access.
I mean, I. Whatever was on the private access, I have it already in PDFs. So that way I, you know, I always have, I'll always have the access. I mean, we've only been doing it. Since two thousand thirteen.
Ten years.
Yeah, ten years. So.
I mean, we we can move all those files back over time.
I mean, it's not a big deal. I mean, I mean, I have it. So it's it's not that. It's just. You know, I I just want to make sure that, you know, that. Number one. Public access to it is 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 the easiest, that they can get the information that they want. You know, that the permitting process is 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 as much as. Is fluid as much as possible, you know, and especially, you know, with the permitting process that the response times are also, you know, quicker. You know, I mean.
With everything.
I know, I know. It's been a lot quicker than than it has been in the past. But when you're a homeowner looking to do, you know, get something done and you get the permit and then, you know. Thirty days seems like thirty years, you know, and it's just the whole, you know, we want to make sure that we want to cut down on that time. And especially the communication from staff to, you know, the permit request people are are. You know, is there and why, you know, as to why they they need more information or they need a different kind of response. So. That's what I but it's so far. I mean, it looks great to be honest with you. I just I like to look and. You know, I look forward to.
And hopefully the first thirty days will be a lot of questions we'll be able to answer, answer residents with the comments and questions.
Yes.
Okay.
And the pictures are nice.
So I have a bittersweet announcement presentation. Mr. Shay, Chris Shay, he's been with us for how long?
Going on three years.
Three years. He writes for the Dartmouth Week and his progress, quality of his work. Just kept getting better and better. And I say that with most respect and Chris has decided to move on to New York Times? Not yet. So, okay, close enough. In all absolute seriousness, what you've done, how you covered, get the word out for us, has been great work. You voice your opinion sometimes and 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 it's a really great job. I'd just like to read this. From the Town of Dartmouth, official select board citation. Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its gratitude to Chris Shay. In recognition of your hard work and dedication while covering the Town of Dartmouth as reporter for Dartmouth Week. Wishing the best in all your future endeavors. Signed by the select. Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chris. Okay.
Oh, great job. Thank you.
They're reporting.
They're reporting, that is.
They're reporting.
Put that in a nice good part of your your.
Frame, absolutely. If they don't appreciate you, you come back.
If you get a Pulitzer Prize, you can just use the same frame that Dad's in. We won't mind.
Two sided.
Is it is the Dartmouth Week concluded, the Pulitzer Prize?
No, just him.
Oh, go forward.
It goes usually with the author.
Oh, it's previous work. Okay. Thank you. Nice going. Next, town administrator update.
Yes, so you heard me mention the website, but also as we mentioned at a meeting last month, beach stickers are now available for purchase online. It's been very successful to start in the last few weeks. We've processed almost one hundred and fifty beach stickers just in a few weeks. So it's. We encourage more people to go on and online and purchase beach stickers. Human Resources, we had the selection of the next director of budget and finance tonight, Gary Carrero. We have new, he he mentioned this in his talk also that we have new employees in both the collectors and the assessors office, filling existing positions. We're continuing to evaluate candidates for the assistant town administrator position. We continue to try to fill a number of positions at the Department of Public Works. Denise is working very hard to kind of advertise and get the word out. And we tonight finalized the search committee for the library director. So we'll be starting that next week. And then also under human resources, we finalized a contract for a grant we received from the Community Compact to do a human resources study in town. We're going to contract with the Collins Center of Boston to do that. And then we've started the process of implementing our human resources module in Munis, which is, as you know, is our financial software package that does quite a bit more. which is, as you know, is our financial software package that does quite a bit more, uh, uh, payroll processing, treasury functions, uh, invoices, so, uh, they have an HR module that we'll be starting to incorporate. Under Department of Public Works, uh, last week Weston Sampson presented the water system evaluation and five-year recommended master plan at the, uh, Board of Public Works meeting. It's also available online, uh, some of the, just, you know, of the recommendations, uh, for the plan or, you know, an increase in staffing, uh, for water treatment. But also, uh, in their capital improvement plan, uh, they've recommended improvements to the water treatment plants and some infrastructure. Uh, over the five year, their total estimated cost of improvements comes in around twenty million dollars. Uh, but that is, you know, in a, a perfect world, uh, implementing everything, uh, but, uh, overall, that was, the presentation is comprehensive, but like I said, I urge the public to, to go in and take a, a read. Um, uh, Mass, Department of Transportation is having a design public hearing for improvements to Route Six from Fox Corner Road to Hathaway Road, that's gonna be happening, uh, in this room here at Town Hall on March ninth at six PM. Uh, and under finance, we're continuing with the, uh, annual budget process, uh, the capital, uh, budget process in the town meeting warrant, that's been taking up a lot of time. Uh, where, uh, Gary will be back at a future meeting, cause as he, as he mentioned to you, there's a number of policies that either need to be updated or have not been implemented and he'll be, uh, presenting the draft town investment policy. Uh, and then, uh, oh, and then tonight's meeting, uh, wraps up our community compact and best practices grant that we're receiving for the open space and recreation plan. So we receive these grants and we, you know, work hard to get them implemented and we, uh, notify the state when they're done. We don't let these linger and also that's been, uh, beneficial in us receiving additional grants from the state. So just to fill you in on why it's important to have these wrap-up meetings with, uh, some of these projects. And that's all I have.
Comments on that, anybody?
Nope.
Okay, uh, old business. Uh, Bliss Corner.
Bliss Corner, no new updates, uh, Lake Nokicho, no new updates.
One comment on Bliss Corner, I had a, uh, a resident come up to me and ask me, uh, why the change? And just to clarify, why the change of moving the, um, the dug up, uh, dirt, if you will, from Bliss Corner to the old police station? And why did you need to do that? And tried to explain it to her and I think, um, and I, my explanation to her and maybe public, some people can hear the same is that the EPA has been, and we're watching it carefully, has been, in Chris Michaud's words, have done a really good job sticking to the program, staying clean and doing the job. And we expect the same, uh, at the old police station site. Uh, it's something we had to do, there's no choice, that old space was not available any longer and we will continue to, once they do move it over. And she also didn't realize that the police station's gonna be removed at some point, which it is. Uh, but, um, we will be vigilant and watching how they work and, uh, working along with EPA. And I know our Board of Health and we've done the same, we can visit to make sure that all the standards they have been enforcing will do the same once it, that other piece of land, because it, it does move it out of Bliss Corner into a different part of town.
But they've done an excellent job at the location that they had with the trucks going in and out over, over barriers to remove the, you know, so they wouldn't take any of that dirty soil back.
We'll continue to be vigilant on watching though, when they change the, uh, change the technique over the other place.
They seem to be careful about how they, when they, when they're moving dirt that's all covered, which is the, the thing to do, that's by law. And they, they're, um, they, they, they're very, very careful in how they, how they handle this dirt and where they put it and how they protect it from the environment.
Okay, thank you, let me interrupt.
Uh, the broadband, uh, study that is out for rebid as we do, uh, I think next week, uh, for review. Uh, and then the Title V amendments, uh, as you know, uh, many of you were there last week, uh, last Thursday, there was an update, uh, from Chris Michaud, our Director of Public Health on, uh, just providing, uh, information to, uh, residents in the public who were new to the issue. Apparently there are still, uh, people that are just learning about this, this issue. So it was an overview of information, uh, to date, uh, that, uh, Chris was able to give. You know, there's, uh, an item that keeps coming up is a litigation strategy for the town, from the public, uh, as mentioned at the meeting, uh, by the select board. Uh, town council, the select board and myself have had numerous, uh, privileged discussions, the contents of which need to remain privileged regarding strategy, including potential litigation against DEP to address the many significant concerns and inequities arising out of DEP's proposed amendments to the state environmental code, Title V. Uh, town council has also discussed these issues with town council from other communities. The contents of these discussions, uh, cannot be disclosed. To share further information publicly could jeopardize the position of the town. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that was mentioned at the meeting, so that, uh, people are aware that, that the, the board is working with council.
Members, uh, have a comment on that? Mr. McSimpson?
So I, I really wanna comment on, on the meeting itself, yes. We had a really wonderful turnout, I'm very happy to see that, I'm sorry there aren't a lot of people here tonight. But, um, I'd like to clear the air regarding the select board's position about Title V and the question of, of our resolve as a select board. It, it disturbs me that there were questions about if we were not up to the, the, up to the, the duty of our, of our responsibility. And I, uh, truthfully, I was a, a little taken back at that, that they, they were not careful, not, they, they didn't believe, maybe they didn't believe that we were really behind them, but I'll tell you this, so nine, nine years ago, myself and Mr. McDonald were on the select board at that time and we were up against the DEP again, Cecil Smith property. And we won. We won big and we're gonna win this big on top of it all. So, uh, I just can't understand it, that there is a concern about that. So the select board, when we are sworn in every three years, we put a hand on the Bible and our right hand in the air and we swear to uphold the law of the town and, and, and defend all the residents, every last one of them. And I take, putting my hand on a Bible and putting my hand up to God is a big deal. I go to services every morning, I'm very religious, means a lot to me. It is our fiduciary, fiduciary responsibility to take care of the town as a whole. And when there's problems, we need to lead the way to, to, to solve these problems. We're gonna win this, I'm sure of it and, and we're gonna win it one hundred percent. So. So the other thing was, and I still think also, there's, there's a few people that are trying to divide this town and using that, using the, the Title V issue to whatever means they're looking to do. I have no idea, nor do I care. But I must say that we're here for the, for the, for the residents that are going through this. And I understand that, 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 look, I'd be up all night long if I were in the middle of this. I'm all, I'm all night long trying to, trying to make sure that we do defend these people and help them. We're not gonna throw them out on a, on, on an island by themselves, by no means will we ever do that. We're here to support their, this mess that we've got into, but we'll get out of it and we're gonna win it. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, I, I understand the frustration that's out there. Because, I mean, you know, you got, you got a significant sum of money that these people are gonna be spending. And so I can understand that and where we sit becomes inherent, where we always have the targets. I don't have a problem with that, especially if I know whatever's coming my way, you know, I have an answer for. So, but I, that I can understand. My lack, my frustration at this moment right now, though, is that it just, this seems to be just being discussed in this sixty mile radius. And that it's not going, it's not being heard outside of Taunton. Anywhere from Taunton and above, it's not being heard, as far as I can tell. You know, haven't heard anything from west of the Taunton River. Heard some things from Westport, a lot from Acushnet, very little from Lakeville. Nothing, I, I, maybe a few things from Rochester, Manapoiset. Haven't heard anything.
New Bedford.
From New Bedford.
No, will you?
At all. And I haven't heard anything from the governor's office. Haven't heard anything from the attorney general's office. Heard some things from Senator Montigny, Senator Markey, representatives, I mean, Representative Markey, Representative Schmidt. Where are the other representatives? Where, where's the senator for Fall River or whoever that is, I have no idea, nor do I care. But, you know, where are these people? We need to send a letter to the governor's office, not ask, but demand a meeting with the governor or at least somebody from their office. We have to tell them what's going on. I have called the Globe three times, I've called Spotlight several times, I've sent them information, I've sent them the Dartmouth Week information. And not once have I heard anything from them at all. Because this isn't, I guess this isn't a, a flavorful thing, this isn't, well, I'm not gonna go there. You know, I, I, I don't understand the lack of response from the state government on this issue. And I'm, I'm positive that they're aware of it, or at least they give us the, you know, the, the lip service that, oh, you know, we know what's going on, you know? I know you're setting up an administration for the first time and it's, you know, but the, there's, sometimes there are these issues that are just too damn important to where you need to put your organizational skills aside and start dealing with the public, and this is one of them. And I, we just need, we need to send a letter post haste to the, to the governor's office. I don't care if we meet via Zoom, I really don't. You know, no big deal, that's, that seems to be the flavor of what's going on now. But we need to, we need to talk to, we need to talk to, personally, I would like to talk to her, but I'll deal with the staff. So that at least we have a record of, of somebody, you know? I just don't wanna, I just don't want us being in a position where, you know, we're the boy who cried wolf. And there's just way too much information out there to show them that we're not crying wolf, that there's legitimate problems at DEP that need to be addressed statewide and at the state government level. And I think that's something that we need to address.
Said, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, um, I wanna piggyback on what Sean said and I have some other things to, um, report as well. Um, I, I think Thursday's meeting for me was, uh, every time I interface with this information on Title V, I feel like I have a, yeah, another aha moment as we're learning more information. But one thing, I think, um, as you said, there's nothing, you know, crickets beyond, um, Taunton, is that when we looked at that, the map and we saw the darker green of the Cape and we're in this lighter green, that there, I felt that there was even some people in the audience that night that kinda sat back and said, oh, okay, so the, the clock isn't ticking on us one to five, this is in the future. That being said, I'm very happy that we are being proactive before anything happens to say, let's, let's look at this, let's pivot. Um, two things, one, um, I've heard, gotten some information from different people who questioned, um, Buzzard Bay Coalition involvement, because when DEP put out there this, um, this change, um, Buzzard's Bay Coalition is listed as, um, being involved with them. They were not involved with them. Mark Rasmussen has, um, issued a statement saying it was almost like a list, listserv list that DEP put out, anyone that we communicate with, this is what we communicate with, we communicate. But Buzzard's Bay Coalition did not have any insight prior to what we all received the first time. Um, and so they're actively working to get DEP to rethink about that.
Can I just question that? Because two people from the Buzzard's Bay Coalition was listed on the NSA committee.
They were, they were.
So they, so they weren't not an active member of that committee?
No, so they, so they have an issue, they have an issue.
Idea.
Right.
DEP doesn't even list the right people on the committee.
Correct, and they feel very, they're put out because they're being called into question as to, why did you, why did you say this was okay and now you've changed your mind? It's not a change of mind, they had no idea.
They won't retract that either.
No, and as we said last Thursday and have said again, this is a knee jerk reaction to something, you know, a lawsuit down in Barnstable. That all being said, it is a wake-up call for Dartmouth now to say, we need to protect our waterways. We need to get more information. I think the presentation that we had, um, I think it was a week or so ago, from Buzzard's Bay Coalition, Daniel.
It was on the waterways, uh.
Waterways, um, was a fabulous presentation, which is, you know, if you Google it, you'll, you'll find it. Because it told us about the healthy ecosystems that we have in Dartmouth and how those healthy ecosystems are doing their job to take our pollutants and our nitrogen and phosphorus and everything else and cleaning it up before it reaches the upon a Gansett Harbor. That being said, we need to make sure that we continue this work and get ahead of this issue. Um, and it's a, to me, it's a townwide issue, this is not an issue for the folks with septic systems. This is an issue for all of us, to wake up and pay attention to the quality of water and our, our groundwater, the water going into a upon a Gansett, as well as, um, septic issues that we can look at and say, as you just said with that presentation with, uh, um, DEP, with, uh, the Department of Public Works and their master plan, is we need to look at the water, um, treatment plant. Does it have the capacity? What are some pros and cons with the pan, plant now? Can we sewer more homes? At what point? We have to deal with all of this and we can't kick this can down the road. I do hope, as I had stated before, um, our Board of Health Director, Christopher Michaud and Mark Rasmussen, the President of the Buzzard's Bay Coalition, co-authored a letter to go to the governor. They have not received word if it has been, if she has received it yet. However, they are aware that this week, or last week, it's only Monday, she was in the Cape, um, talking to folks about this issue down the Cape. Um, we don't want her to forget about us. So I have, um, I drafted a letter to send, um, to the governor that I, um, submitted to you, did you want me to read that?
I think it's fine with me.
Sure.
Any objection?
Of course, I think it should be expanded.
Okay.
Well, it's too short.
Our goal was to, to keep it, I, my goal was to keep it quick, so it's this one letter that she says that basically, I will read it. Please accept this letter in support of the collaborative discussions and common ideas between Christopher Michaud, Town of Dartmouth's Director of Public Health and Mark Rasmussen, President of Buzzard's Bay Coalition in response to the current DEP's proposed regulations regarding septic systems in nitrogen sensitive areas. We ask on behalf of the residents of Dartmouth, both those who live with a septic system, whether it be upgraded or not, as well as our sewed residents, that you redirect DEP's efforts. As a coastal community, we acknowledge the need to refocus our energy on addressing clean water. We would appreciate that you take the opportunity to speak with Christopher Michaud and Mark Rasmussen regarding an alternative path forward. We too stand ready to work with the DEP and your office to achieve the ultimate goal of reduced nitrogen entering, um, entering our waters. I chose that wording because that is what the DEP, the DEP is talking about septic systems and nitrogen and those are the two biggies. We know that nitrogen is the first thing, there'll be something else coming up and we're also very. And we're also very aware that the nitrogen reducing. Systems that are now marketed to folks with. Septic systems. May not have the nitrogen reducing capacity that is needed. And I think we need to look at a town is how do we create a couple of structures? One is a town committee, which I want to talk about at a future meeting. That would be folks to talk about this issue and how we can. We're getting traction that the town is listening. This is not a problem for just our septic. Residents. This is for all of us to have a better understanding of how. The symbi, you know, the symbiotic. You know, when the butterfly flaps its wings in Africa, how we're, you know, when I flush my toilet, what is happening? And where does that go? And I don't even think that we know all we need to know about the current. Septa sewer plant. So I think we have a lot.
I'd like to comment on the letter because I think this is a very broad discussion. And right now there's a letter on the table. Uh, because I have a lot of other things to say myself, and I know we have people in the audience who want to say something as well. Uh, can we make first some comments about the letter and come up with a, do we want to send the letter? Do we want to modify it? And what, and also knowing there's a, there's a much bigger piece going as well, but we're not going to talk about that today. Mr. McDonald.
Well, I mean, I think the letter is written is fine. I think it just should be added to that, you know, we want to sit down with the governor. We, as. As leaders, we need to talk to them. We need to talk to her or her office.
Not so, you you mentioned just.
And the other thing, you know, the other thing too is that, you know, I mean, we can. We can sit down and do anything, but there's other things that need to be addressed. I mean. You know. What I see. The part of the the bigger problem is areas that we cannot address, which is composting. You know, the state needs to re, the state needs to rethink that. And that's what, that's what we need to do also to bring that to the state's attention. But, you know. One of the things that really bothers me. Well, this is a lot actually that bothers me, but one of the things that that I'm. I have a hard time grasping is that the data that's being used, everybody says the data is old. Why can't we update the data? Why can't we do that? I mean.
Buzzard's Bay Coalition is helping with that as they take.
But you know something we have.
Who's responsible to do?
Why can't we?
We should be doing.
I mean, we we should do it. I mean, you know, I mean, one of the, one of the most important pieces of data that can be extracted. Real quick. Is the people who have wells. They have their wells tested. Let us know what the results are.
And that is a huge concern in North Dartmouth with composting.
That will tell us a lot as to what really needs to be done.
I I would, okay, I, let's put the letter aside for a minute because I I do think that the letter that that. The letter, the broader letter sent to the governor, the quality piece, and we decide that, but my opinion right now is what I'm going to speak up about is that. What I think we've all been exposed to is we have some incredibly competent, well spoken people in town. Who have the passion and the knowledge to help us on a committee. Mr. Faye is out there and I have complete faith in his passion and his, and hopefully he can join us. We have Rob Almy who for a career studied these exact same things. And I don't want, and of course we have Mr. Michaud who, he doesn't go halfway. I would propose that and we can assemble this committee and then come up with a mission and then. Do things as quickly as as fast as we want to do it, which would include all these issues. Of testing, of composting and what we want to recommend to the to the state. Because I, I think we should end up with two things. One is, I think the Buzzard's Bay Coalition is the key to our success. They know our town better than we do. They have an interest that goes beyond our town. They can get other people involved and they have all the data and information we need. And they're also professionals that we can bring to the state and say, look, this is the greatest group in the history of the East Coast and Buzzard's Bay. And here's what they're saying, so you got to listen. And with them and any other town that wants to join us. Uh, we then have the ammunition to then go with qualified people. And I just, I'm so incredibly grateful of all the people who've spoken to us.
I'm, I'm looking.
And I just, I also think that also you see these handful of people and their interest is simply to. Put a line in the sand and they say, either you agree with me or you don't. Well, that's national politics. We're not doing that. Mr. Faye, Chris has all kinds of ideas that we may agree and not disagree, but he's respectful. He listens and we can negotiate and talk. The line in the sand stuff is going to be left for the national politics. Our town has to stay as a team. We've done it before. Gloria Bancroft is here and I'm sorry she left. Because as you know, you guys know better than me, the role she played at Cecil Smith. She wasn't even, as Chris Michaud said to me today, in the beginning, they thought she was a lunatic. Extreme, what are you worried about? And she saved the end of town for us along with other people together. And I would hope that maybe she would join us on this committee because she has the passion and the knowledge and she stuck to it.
She lives out there.
She does, so.
I'm, I'm looking at other communities that have comprehensive wastewater management plan committees. And we, we do have on our, in our. History, we have a comprehensive wastewater management plan in Dartmouth. But we need a committee to, well devised strategic committee that looks at the plan. Finds new information that we need, expands that that plan. And when you say DEP. Right now, it would, it would be an completely unfunded mandate from the state. We can't have that. And that's one piece. And the second piece is. The DEP does not appear to have enough. Folks within its department to monitor this. And because it's not going to be monitored does not mean we don't do it. We know a light has been brought to us that there is a problem and we need to solve it. Not for, for our current residents now, but for the residents of the future. And Thursday night when we had a woman speak who was a Realtor. And this was one of my aha moments. If the, our residents that have septic systems. In a town that we know and love, that we feel people want to come and have paid a lot of money recently to to move here. If their properties are going to be devalued because they have a septic system and the worry. About what that price will be in the future. When this all happens, that's a problem and that's a problem for all of us.
Yes, it is. It's, you multiply that times how many houses turn over over in the years?
Exactly. And so in the, you know, at our, perhaps even our next meeting, I'd like to propose. A committee and I would like us to. Go forth with even created a warrant article for town meeting to put money aside to. For a study. So this, we're going to be aggressive. We're not going to wait till they knock on our door.
Things that this committee has to do in the very short term.
Yes.
The middle term and then the long term plan. And the short term stuff, I mean, it's, it's, it's knocking on our door.
Yep.
And of course, DEP could rule on this next week and week after, you know, we have to be ready and prepared.
We have, and I'm watching what's happening down in Barnstable Courts because. They just have to submit everything and then of course that's a process, but you know, it's, it's, you can't unknow this. I can't unknow this now and I can't wait for somebody to tell us we have to do something. We know we have to do something and so let's do it.
What are the limitations we have in terms of sounding, getting the word out that we want to establish this committee? What's, what's? How do you feel about it and what do you think we should do about it?
Well, it's up to the board to inform the committee. Certainly what I can do is you've made it known, so I'll, I'll draft a committee charge. So for the next meeting, the board can vote.
I'll send you some information on that.
Get some names quickly.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's the quickest we can do it and it's.
And then you could establish it at the next meeting. I mean, generally what we do is, you know, for a committee, we create the committee charge to its purpose and then you solicit. Input, you want, ask for, you know, letters of interest and then you review those and appoint the committee.
I take it there's nothing we can do tonight to stop that process?
Well, I think the charge is that we're going to create this and and now.
I mean, even, even vote on that, the, the committee itself and then start the process rather than wait till the next meeting.
I have, I have done some draft work as what the committee would look like and some steps. And I'd like to put that together and present it to you. I don't want to.
On the sixth, our next meeting. That's not that far away, so.
We okay to wait for that?
Yep.
Great. Any other want to recommend Sean in this regard?
Can't get him much faster.
No, that's, that, that's good. I think in the short term, if the board knows people that might be interested in being on the committee, notify them that this is happening and then.
I think it's, I think.
Notify somebody.
Chris, you want to say something tonight?
Hello?
Took a wild guess on that one. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me and I appreciate all the concerns from the board and and the administrator. Chris Faye, resident of Dartmouth. Very, very concerned citizen when it comes to this Title V issue. You know, I think there's some great ideas being tossed around here, you know, and obviously our community is building momentum. One thing that concerns me though, that we're in a period of quietness because DEP. Is, I think, imminently going to adopt these regulations. Tomorrow is a check in down at Barnstable Superior Courthouse. Whether that's in person or virtual, my understanding is that. DEP needs to check in with the judge and see where they're at in this process. Because there is a looming deadline of March thirty first. That's a hard deadline. It's either sink or swim for DEP. If they don't have a plan that's. At the wishes of Conservation Law Foundation, my understanding is that that lawsuit proceeds and the stay order is is voided at that point. So we're really on the clock, as you all know. And. I totally respect and I appreciate the. The attempt to find common ground with the Buzzard's Bay Coalition. My fear is that the desire to proceed with that and bring that up to. Higher up officials up in the state, specifically the governor and and her decision makers. Is that it just might just be too late really for that to be considered if these regs are passed. You know, these are the types of conversations we wanted to have all along. And we should have been granted the opportunity to have those. That's where the local stakeholder engagement, where your community specific needs are identified. As well as working with the community specific advocacy agencies, just like BBC. I have a contact on the Cape, you know, that has some industry knowledge of this from a geologist's point of view that is. Looking at, you know, engaging their equivalency down there to BBC and looking at. Common sense solutions. But again, I fear that the process, it's just like I said on Thursday, it's a, it's a runaway train. And my fear is that the, the good that could come out of these. Opportunities to sit down and find solutions is all for nothing because of. DEP's capitulation to CLF and what I fear is almost like a past tense issue. They poshed themselves as if this is almost going to take effect. That leads me back to the legal options and I, I heard what was said before and on Thursday and I, I respect that. I would like a more thorough explanation from town council as to why. You know, the intervention motion is not going to be pursued. So David, I know you had said to me that things could change tomorrow. That's a cryptic statement, right? I mean, I, and I understand there's some unknowns here. If that option is not going to be pursued by the town. And it's a time sensitive option, one in which my understanding comes off the table. Once these regs are adopted. Why can't we talk about that option? And even if we're speaking in generalities. In terms of when a intervention motion is applicable, say in a generic case. For instance, I, I know that the, there's some Cape Cod communities based on a lawsuit back in two thousand thirteen. And and I think the lawsuit ended up going away, so the intervention motion may not have played out in fruition, but. Several communities down the Cape did pursue a legal intervention motion. In particular, Sandwich Water District, Bourne Water District, Town of Falmouth. Had moved to intervene in a case that essentially was CLF versus I believe EPA. Disputing some of the TMDLs that were put forth down there. And I haven't done a complete read in that into this. But where I'm going with it is. I understand we've got to keep, you know, legal strategy privileged. But this intervention motion does give us an opportunity as a community to get a seat at the table. One in which we don't have now because we're not, we're completely on the outside looking in. And my fear is that leaving this option on the table, it just limits what we've got for. Options once they fully adopt us and it takes root and becomes just that much more difficult to turn it around. So with that said, I, I would like to get a response in regards to. Can town council, perhaps at next meeting with enough advance notice. Come in and explain to the citizens because I'm not alone. I will say that my voice represents quite a few folks in town. This is a technical issue and one that requires quite, quite a bit of time and I've been willing to put that in, as you know. As you folks are as well, and a few other concerned citizens. So I'd like to really get a more in-depth understanding of that because if this comes to fruition tomorrow. Because DEP says we're going to forge ahead with, with the regulations as currently written. Well. You know, it is what it is.
Any reply?
I just, what we read, unfortunately, just.
Yeah, we. I know you'd like to hear more, but the, that issue has not been brought toward, to us. Anybody else want to mention anything or talk, any reply to Chris?
I'm not sure what, what you mean it hasn't been brought forth, like discussed with town council?
I, it's, he's, he said is what he's, he has said to us and then published what he can do.
At this point in time, any comment from anybody? So let me ask if, if, if there were another attorney out there that felt differently. And we have funds that could go to bringing on legal counsel that perhaps felt that that was a viable option for the town. To put us in a better defensive posture. Would the board entertain outside legal counsel at that point with perhaps someone that, you know? Maybe more specialized in this arena?
I, I can just say that the, the way the charter is written, the board appoints a town council and town council would have to approve. Other council that the town would be using.
Okay.
So just so you're aware, the board can't make that, they can make the decision, but they, the charter says the town council has to recommend.
Okay.
But let's, let's just leave it. We'll, we'll take that under advisement at this point in time. We have another meeting on the sixth and we'll go from there. Okay?
And there's a difference between a litigator of municipal law versus an environmental lawyer.
Yep.
And so these things are being considered.
Sure, and I, I'm sure they play complimentary roles in some regard. So you had mentioned something about the Realtor that spoke up at the last meeting too, you know. And I'm hearing out there through my contacts in the industry that these. These fears are are being realized right here, right now. It's not like down the line. The what if, if these regs get adopted, this is already impacting. The attractiveness of buying into Dartmouth. And for potential folks that are either trying to sell to move in Dartmouth or move elsewhere. The stigma is already upon us, you know, and. What, you know, in theory, what, what's going to happen if, if, if our property tax values are diminished? Because of this stigma that's, that's over this, it's a cloud over the whole community. You know, I, I could foresee the town having a situation where tax abatements are, are pursued en masse. Because of the, you know, the diminished, you know, market value of homes. And that, that could, that could affect town revenues, you know, because that would be to me. If that went as high as, you know, the appellate court or something to that effect that has jurisdiction over that process, that, that could be a. Something that the town is looking at. A, a, a big shortcoming of, of revenue coming in. So it has a, a macroeconomic effect, you know. To, to Tom funds and how we function.
It's not falling on deaf ears. I know that we're hearing from you. We're also, I'm personally receiving a number of, of emails and. Phone calls and being stopped at the market. But. As, as Sean said, it's crickets in other parts of the state. The mass state realtors have sent. The mass state realtors have sent a letter of concern. As Chris Meeshow said Thursday night, people should be writing letters from the heart. So residents who have their concerns, we should still continue to inundate the governor, DEP, letters to the editor, you know, to get some traction. I am hopeful that the things that you have you are currently listing will not come to fruition, that there will be a a level headedness by someone. I I even joked with someone that perhaps DEP is having their own meetings saying, someone stop us. This was a bad form. Hopefully there'll be a a difference. I don't think we're losing a whole lot of time because I know, as we said, Representative Markey, Senator Montigny, Schmidt, Michael Roderick's, I know that there are others working in in front and behind the scenes to to get the governor to intervene. And that being said, I hope that the municipal court will also be listening to folks. And it's very different, as Chris Meeshow pointed out, looking at what they can do down the Cape with the Cape sandy soils versus what we can do in Dartmouth. This is this, they cannot paint us all with the same brush.
And and that's why I think it's important to get data, current data, so that we can make a compelling argument that's data driven. Because we're dealing with outdated data, we're dealing with models that are Cape centric, they're not specific to, you know, our geology and whatnot. And, you know, therein lies a big part of the problem. You know, I've heard the that the lieutenant governor was down the Cape. And I question, why isn't the same attention? Why wasn't Dartmouth and and I'm gonna speak for Dartmouth, but Dartmouth and Westport are kind of joined at the hip at this, right? Because we share these two watersheds. What what precluded, you know, the lieutenant governor and her people from bringing in the South Coast communities? Again, we're we're a day late and dollar short to this process by by the lack of engagement from from these state leaders. And and I'm not here to hop on the governor.
And I be I believe it's because we're light green and not the dark green of the Cape.
And and that that very well could be part of the case. And, you know, one of my concerns lies is that is just, you know, I've I I read, I read, you know, the comings and goings of the Commonwealth and what's going on in this. There's a lot of, you know, initiatives right out of the gate with this governor. And I I wish her all the success because we're all going to benefit, you know, under her leadership. And again, like you said, this isn't DC politics. This this is a bipartisan issue. And and this this hits home with with all folks from demographic, different demographics, different political views, the whole nine yards. We're all in this together.
There's a lot at stake.
There really is.
Tremendous monoman.
And I'm hoping the lieutenant governor, as she, you know, she comes from Salem, so she's a, you know, a resident and the former mayor of a coastal community that must have some color shade of green in Salem as well.
She probably will be because Salem may may end up having that because this is going to impact coastal communities. It's also going to impact inland communities when you get the phosphorus that's that's happening in the kettle ponds and the small freshwater bodies. But, you know, many folks that I know, including myself, just have not heard heard back, you know, from the governor's office on anything like this. Not even a robo reply or from a a a mid-level staffer. And I I feel like it is falling on deaf ears and I I I appreciate the local representation that's reaching out to the governor. But but, you know, this is something that I feel that the governor has ha has an opportunity to to do the right thing by all residents of the Commonwealth and make a a big pivot on this. But silence is deafening right now. We shouldn't have to wait until the hammer drops on our community to hear from, you know, our elected leaders. So I I I'm 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 a bit disappointed with that, to be honest with you, and I think we just got to keep pushing. Couple of other things real quick. I know I know that last meeting, it was discussed that the New Bedford CSOs were going to be on the table, but I didn't see that for executive session. Is that just something that's being pushed out? I'm just curious on that because I feel, you know, that that plays a significant role in something that like if we're going to talk to the governor and we're gonna, we're gonna put all our cards on the table, the New Bedford CSOs has to be real close to the top of the list. Now, we have an, and I never thought I'd say this, but again, I I don't like where CLF is coming at this and driving the boat. They have the the hand on the steering wheel of DEP. DEP's hands are in their pockets on this. It's being driven by an outside lawsuit. Where is CLF on these CSOs? If they took Fall River to task and rightfully so with the pollutants that were going into Mount Ho Bay, where the hell are they on Buzzards Bay and our community waterways? I I find it appalling that they're picking and choosing. Are they? Are they? Is there a nose on where the money might be? Because they've got to get funded somehow.
And the committee that I'm proposing would, that would be part. Looking at the the CSOs coming out of New Bedford would be within the umbrella of that committee and New Bedford has been silent on the Title V issue.
Completely.
Crickets.
Well, they haven't played played their role on on signing our waterways, you know, from their pollution.
So we do, we do have to put pressure on.
And and I I do advocate for the potential threat of legal action if they can't, you know, hold up their end of the bargain. It's it's just not right. So Upon-Angst Bay was discussed, right? I I I hadn't been able to find the the recording of that committee meeting.
It's it's on the, it was at a waterways meeting, so.
Okay.
It's probably on that, on their.
Okay, yeah, I looked through DCTV because I was interested in.
Email you a link. I can email you a link.
It's well.
It was fascinating.
You'll be, this guy is, he knows our, he knows the streets, the streams, the rivers, the runoff, and of course, the estuaries. He's just, he's the guy that we have on our side.
That's good. I I look forward to reviewing that. So a couple of things that I've read about like the Upon-Angst.
About five more minutes, Chris, alright?
Not not a problem, not a problem.
Okay.
Um, you know, we've got Buttonwood Brook feeding that, right? And that comes right through the pond where there's a lot of geese and things like that up at Buttonwood Park. You've got the zoo over there too. And the concerns, I have a neighbor, Dan Turner, he spoke a couple of times in front of the board here. He's a wastewater expert, about forty years of experience, and he had some really, really good common sense solutions. And again, he he's a subject matter expert in wastewater. You know, looking at ways of, well, number one, I know that's on the study right now. But and it's discharging into Upon-Angst Bay, which is heavily sewed all around the perimeter of it. So where is the, where are these sources coming from? Well, I think upstream needs to be looked at. But, you know, he raised some good points that even Dartmouth, in addition to New Bedford, we've got to look at total nitrogen removal when it comes to our wastewater treatment plants. That's an investment that Dartmouth really needs to dig into. So I'd like to see the public work board, you know, look at that and consider that as an option because if we're going to show as a community that we're putting our best foot forward to come up with those holistic, you know, opportunities and and ideas to self govern this process.
And in this presentation, you're going to hear things that we could do tomorrow morning.
Yeah, on the Buttonwood Brook to make a difference.
Yep.
And they're not that expensive.
Correct.
And he has a lot of these suggestions in the entire town. And that to me is.
And these are things that are going to impact the the planning, the zoning.
Yeah.
There's lots of boards that this is going to impact because we have to make sure that the estuaries that take that, those pollutants of, we'll talk about the zoo, the elephant in the room, that take the, that take that water path to Upon-Angst Bay and clean it. And we may have to make sure that that path remains clear of encroaching housing and other things. And and we need to look at all of those streams and sources.
Simon is to watch that for the next meeting, Chris.
Yep, I will watch it. And I mean, if you got to police that too, I mean, you know, I know when they're cleaning out, they're pulling shopping carts out and it's like, how did that even get in there?
But not anymore, Chris. Simon McDonald's got all over that.
Shopping carts are allowed in town anymore.
Exactly. So just just to put a wrap on this, the you know, composting in and of itself, that that video that was prepared, unfortunately, it wasn't prepared in time for the meeting, but it's it's obviously available on DCTV. And what a job that was put into that by Chris and his staff. That brings it down to a a a layman's perspective. You can see the the streams of runoff coming from these piles. You see things that are undeniable. You don't need a science or engineering background to see these things. So if that hasn't opened some eyes, I I'd be shocked.
I was, that to me is a short-term immediate action item for this this committee because.
And yeah.
It's painfully.
Again, for this, the committee that we're proposing, that that would be a whole other piece that currently what DEP is looking at doesn't discuss composting at all. And everything we do, if we became fully sewed, all of these things are not going to have the impact that DEP is saying if we still have the sludge that's brought in outside of Dartmouth to these composting sites and that runoff. It's not going to change a thing and we need to.
Do you, I take it you'd be interested in serving in this committee?
Yes, sir.
And maybe you talk to Mr. Turner?
I I can.
I can speak for Oliver, but maybe he put his name forward if he's interested.
I I do believe he'd be interested. I could talk to him about that.
We'll only meet about three times a week, so don't.
A lot of free time. But, you know, great, great discussion. You know, going back to even what Mr. Almy had said, you know, Brayton Point closes down. You look at air quality and and some of the atmospheric deposition of some of the things coming out of out of the air that are that precipitate. Big reductions. That's not captured in that old data because that was closed not too, not too long ago.
Absolutely.
And as was discussed, the uncontrollable nitrogen, big part of that being state controlled lands.
Right.
I think composting as a whole, mass municipal association or some other body should be looking at consensus building, coalition building, whatever you want to call it. And going after the state for this basically wild, wild west of dumping, you know, composting, you know.
With the suckers.
You know, it's in the backwoods of Dartmouth. We've got people downwind of this. They can't enjoy their properties because of putrid smell. And then it's the what you don't see that's going into our groundwater and pooling.
DP, DP is holding their nose on their own responsibilities to state and pointing fingers at septic tanks.
It it's it's a combination of them and Mdar. I mean, again, not not a sue happy guy by any means, but this is where litigation is needed because if otherwise, everybody's sitting on their.
Well, the other piece too is to look at, we want to make sure that the the state knows that we're watching this because if perchance, the state decides to throw money down the Cape, we want to make sure that we're getting that same.
Oh, there's no doubt about it.
So we we have got to be, we're pulling up to that table.
Yep. Okay, Chris, I hope the governor responds to us because that's where she's the tip of the spear on this and and we need her attention. So.
Thank you for your interest in the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? We had enough for Title V for tonight.
Before we move on, the letter that I sent to you, can we get that on letterhead?
Yeah, can we just, can you work on it with Mr. McGinnis? So that we can throw some McGinnis pros in it also.
Regarding.
I will. Well, look at you.
Regarding.
The letter she's talking.
I don't know, but being specific, you wanted something you want to add to it?
Well, no, I I I want to. I think between the both of them, we can come up with the hell, you know, they can.
Okay, because I really wanted them to know that we, as a select board, to stand ready to work with the DEP. I'm still trying to play nice in your office to achieve the ultimate goal and reduce nitri. I I I understand what what Sean is saying and I think Mr. McGinnis and I can talk about that.
We were authorizing the doctor it up and send it out.
And I'd like to do it as soon as possible so we can get it up to her because we haven't heard it if she's seen the other letter, but we we are not going, we're not taking our time on this.
I take it we don't have to vote on this letter, or do we?
Yes, we do.
You should. I need a motion here.
So moved.
Say it. What is the motion?
Send the letter.
No, it's not that simple. They're going to modify it. We're not going to see it. Or are they going to send it out? What's the procedure?
I I would make a motion to have Ms. Brooks and myself draft the letter to the governor and request a meeting as part of that notification.
Right, okay.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
You need a second. You need a second?
I thought I heard one from Stanley, yeah. Uh, okay, second Stanley?
Yes.
Okay, all favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Title V?
Done.
Good.
For now.
Yeah, till next week.
Uh, minutes. February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
It looked good to me. So moved. Approval.
Uh, one, one comment, they call Steve Miller, Steve Steve Miller not Mellow. Uh, number, uh, letter D. Thank you. Okay.
I thought he was the rock and roll guy. Sorry.
I'm sorry?
I thought he was the rock and roll guy.
That band.
Okay, so we had a motion with the modification?
Yes.
Second?
We have a second.
Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
The minister accepted February thirteenth. Any comments for the select board on updates?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Okay, I want to try and keep this short, but I don't know if it can be. There has been a lot of discussion on social media regarding the individuals collecting donations at the Route Six Farnes Connor Mall Road, Old Westport Road site.
At the intersection?
At the intersection. Sometimes there are one, two, as many as four, sometimes five individuals. They have been told and instructed by the Dartmouth Police Department not to go into traffic. When the police have gone by and have left the left the area, they just continue to go into traffic. And a little bit of research into the impetus for the donation is a child named Cezar Stan. Evidently, Cezar Stan is a is a child who has had cancer, gone through cancer. Uh, and the donations for looking for the child. In reviewing the placards that these individuals have, there's no indication as to where this child is. A little bit of research comes to find out that Cezar Stan is a child who has gone through cancer in Romania and or Turkey. And there is a, I believe, to be a legitimate fundraiser. All these. In checking the donations, which you can on this website, maybe it's because of of the location, everything is done in Euro or in bank transfers. There doesn't seem to be anything in the way of United States donations or maybe any indication, I don't know. But these individuals don't say where these, where the child is. And on face value, it doesn't look legit. Now, they have, I believe, a right to seek donations under the First Amendment, as it's been ruled in several instances, including some panhandling cases. Fall Rivers, Fall River passed a panhandling law which was immediately knocked down because it's unconstitutional. But they don't have a right to impede traffic. The Dartmouth Police Department is looking to come up with a way to deal with this. I made a suggestion that the police department use their mobile signage to put into, you know, the area, basically saying as a general caution to people to beware of scams. But don't literally say, you know, what is a scam? Just that people should be aware of scams, be careful where they, who they're donating to and whatnot. Be careful where they, who they're donating to, uh, and whatnot, um. I've asked two of these five individuals where this child is from, they would not give me an answer. Um, which leads me to believe that this is a giant scam. Um, and people, the only way these people are going to disappear is if you stop giving them money. When that well runs dry, they move somewhere else and they go along, plain and simple. Don't give them any money. You know, I, I, it's, it, it breaks my heart that they're using a child. For, who has, who is legitimately sick. They may be doing it because it's a relative or if, or their family member or not. But there's nothing that indicates this, nothing whatsoever. And people just need to. Be aware of who and what they're contributing to. Simple as that.
And there's a lot of chatter about that on, on social media and most of the chatter is, do not give money.
Yeah.
And we can't, we should continue to beat that, that horse, do not give them any money.
But yet people.
And don't take their bibles.
Yet people still.
They're trying to give out. Just don't engage.
I guess there's no other suggestion we can make though with the new strategies other than.
There's very little you can do. I mean, you know, the Supreme Court, you know, has allowed this. You know, you know, I mean, it, it's.
Freedom of speech.
Well, this is, uh, different than, than collecting for yourself and they're saying they're not collecting.
Yeah, I don't even know, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't even know if we have a jaywalking statue in town. You know, cause I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you're walking in between traffic, give them a ticket for jaywalking. But in order for them to get a ticket for jaywalking, they have to have an ID, they may not even have an ID on it. So.
But they would beep up and in, in between cars like.
Yeah, I mean, they're in between, you know, and, and, you know, God forbid, you know. You've got some people out there that, you know, once they get behind the wheel, you know, they become, you know, the Tasmanian devil and who's to say that they're just gonna pull out, you know? Because somebody's giving them money, they're gonna pull out and then all of a sudden cause an accident or actually hit one of them.
The only difference here is that they could be collecting in the, under the guise of collecting for a charity when in fact they're, they're not.
Giant scam.
So, um, that's illegal.
It is in my opinion.
Right.
That the fundraising effort that they have is not legitimate.
Right. Okay.
But this is a nice segue into that the Dartmouth Community Outreach Team who has dealt with, um. Or has assisted in with our homeless population. Now is, um, continuing to take items that may help, which is they're looking at backpacks, gloves, hats, socks. Underwear, boots, hygiene items, um, to help out and as we, Mr. McDonald mentioned, we do have an impending snowstorm. And I do know that they had given them information about where open shelter spacings were, um. As the temperatures dipped a few weeks ago, um, and so that's a legitimate. You know, if you wanna put your, your, you wanna give something. Uh, think about contributing to the Dartmouth Community Outreach Team.
How do we do that?
Um, you can drop off every, anything that you have at the town hall, but oh, actually every. Um, town building.
Police station.
See a way, the police station, the, the schools, everyone has a donation bin for these items. Um, and they're going directly to the folks in our community.
Right. Thanks, Ms. Brooks.
You're welcome.
Anything else from anybody? Uh, Mr. Chandler?
Just these two other way, just these two other things that, that, um, public hearing input. On the corridor improvements on Route Six, Thursday, March ninth.
Sean had mentioned that.
Six PM.
Yeah.
Here, very important, um, that impacts all of us.
For sure.
Mr. McDonald's gonna drive around that whole neighborhood for a while before we go to the meeting.
I plan on being an ad and telling, giving them my two cents.
Okay. Uh, if, uh, there is a chance, uh, that, uh, will it be more than three of us there? Or three of us?
No.
Friday?
Need, no, 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 you know, just because we show up at somebody else's meeting, as long as we don't discuss anything. It can't, we don't have to have, we don't have to call for a meeting.
That's my point. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Make a discussion, objections and comments.
Better not be.
All in.
We're gonna drive, we're all gonna drive around Route Six.
Opposed, I hear none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.